Good afternoon. I'd like to call the November 4th, 2020 Public Meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission to order. My name is Dee Oliver and I am the Chairman of the Commission. And before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Mike Inman to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Alcaraz George to lead us in the pledge, if you all would stand with me.
It's in our heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with great insight guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. Amen.
Amen. To the elect of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in the nation and the God and the Lord, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, George and Mike. I ask Commissioner Robin Klein to do the introductions of the Commissioner. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, we have Jack Wall, a civil engineer from the Rose Hall District; George Alcaraz, building contractor from Beach District; Dee Oliver, Chairman, Funeral Director, and Member-at-Large; David Weiner, commercial salesman from Kempsville District; Michael Inman, Attorney and Member-at-Large; David Redman, commercial real estate broker from Bayside District; John Kostin, retired Virginia Beach Fire Captain and Member-at-Large; and myself, Robin Klein, social worker from Centerville District.
Great. Thank you, Robin. And our Planning Director Bobby Tahan will introduce his staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With us today, we have our current, our Planning Administration staff, starting with Wa Dow, Planner, Marshall Coleman, Bill Landfair, and Jonathan Sanders, and Carolyn Smith, the Planning Administrator. We also have Janice Abadwa and Ashby Moss with the SGA Office. And our clerking team, we have Pam Sanlieb and Lynn Ronker, and I think Carol Dozier and Nicole Gareto are here also. And also with the City Attorney's Office, we have Victoria Eisenberg and Kay Wilson.
Thank you. And so, our first order of business is, we're going to have the explanation of our rule with our City Clerk of Court.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the Commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the Commission with respect and civility. The Commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated version of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the Order of Business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The Chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The second order of business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believed are unopposed and which have a favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The Commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are representing a large group such as a civic league or a homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the Commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. Final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the City Council. The Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to the next order of business, I just want to say a special thank you to Bill Landfair. He's been with the Planning Department for about two years, I believe, and has done a great job, and he's certainly held my hand through a few things. And Bill's going to be leaving us and going on probably, I don't know where you're going, but we wish you well and Godspeed in your next endeavors, and we will certainly miss you. So, thank you so much for that. So, we're moving on to our next order of business for the items to be deferred or withdrawn. So, please come forward if you have an item to withdraw, and if we do not, then we will go to the deferrals. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Vice Chair, for the record, my name is Rob Beaman. I'm a local Anus attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm. I represent the applicant with respect to items 18 through 27. We'd like to request a 30-day deferral to work with our engineer to provide the city some additional information regarding the building code issue that came up in the informal session this morning. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Do you have any opposition for this item being deferred?
Madam Chair, we do have some speakers for items 18 through 27.
Okay. Thank you. John, we'll hold on.
Customarily, if it's being deferred, we normally would check with the people that would choose to speak if they won't continue to speak or would like to come back at the next hearing, so...
The... Do we want to do it? The person that...
So, we still have people that, even though it is being deferred, did you have, I believe, two?
Yeah. I'm sorry, there's two speakers. Would you like them to come up now? Okay.
Rhonda Heron and then Erin Pearson.
If you don't mind, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Rhonda Heron.
I'm Erin Pearson.
I know they've deferred the thing for the Mayflower, but we live at the Mayflower, and they have currently been Airbnb-ing already for the past four to five months, and we have recordings of people telling us they've been Airbnb-ing. And now then, they've just now put up the signs outside to say that the council meeting was today. We didn't know they weren't allowed to Airbnb, and they just have like six or eight people in a studio apartments at a time, and they party all night long, and we have children living in that building, and we are concerned about it. We didn't feel like it was right for it to go on during the coronavirus anyway, because we, we live there year-round. That's our home. I've lived there for years. And I had to go through a strict background check and credit check to be able to move in there, and now then they're allowing these Airbnb people to just come in and stay overnight and just wreck the hallways and wreck the elevators and be inappropriate in front of my children, and I do not feel okay with it.
Basically, yeah, we, I feel like I had to go through a background check. I had to have a credit check. Both my husband and I did. These people aren't going to have to do that. We're not allowed, it's built into our leases, that we are not allowed to Airbnb our apartments. So, I just don't feel like if we can't do it, then they shouldn't be able to monopolize on that. There's so many things that go on in that building, whether it's, it's not clean, there are roaches. Unfortunately, I have to admit in front of everybody that I have to live with roaches. There's only two people to clean the entire 15 floors. There's three maintenance guys to repair everything. The water is shut off.
Daily.
Daily, it seems like, maybe more like weekly. But all of those things don't lend well to us who have to live there or choose to...
And we're stuck in our leases.
Yeah, we're stuck in our leases. So, we have to live there, and to invite more people who are potentially criminals, predators of some sort, we don't know who these people are. It's supposed to be a secure building. We have keys that let us in. We have codes to let us in, and these people are just going to be given these things, and we'll be able to come and go, we feel like, whenever they want. So, I just, yeah, that's my opposition. So, we know it was deferred, but felt like since we were here, we would speak our piece.
Thank you for letting us come up here.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you all coming down and waiting to hear it, and it will go back on the agenda, when is it? December the 9th. So, then obviously you are welcome to come down, and then I know there is, if you have any other problems, there is a, a number that you can call?
Yes, they gave it to us out there.
Okay.
We appreciate your time. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you all very much. So, we will move on to our next deferral.
Do you want a motion to defer that last one? Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Oliver. Members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, St. John's Apostle Catholic Church and School, item number nine. We request an indefinite, indefinite deferral on that. Hope to be back by January. Been working on this stormwater situation for a year, but appreciate the Commission deferring the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more deferrals? Welcome. If you will state your name.
My name's Andrea Hayner. I'm here on behalf of the STR requests for 557 South Atlantic. We're requesting to defer for 30 days.
Which...
Excuse me. That's item 14, I believe.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry. So, we're requesting to defer for 30 days as we're still waiting to hear back from the Croatan Civic League.
Okay.
We've reached out to them with some questions on the existing, not necessarily approved STRs that are currently operating in the community, so we're just waiting to get some more information back on that, and we'll be able to get our ball rolling again.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any more deferrals?
Madam Chair, I don't believe the representative for the applicant is here, but we did receive in writing a request for item number six, Call Your Associates for a deferral of their item so they can do a continued public outreach and provide documentation for staff review. Says item number six, Call Your Associates.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, I need a motion on the deferral items. Number six. Number nine. Number 14. Is that everything?
18 through 27.
Oh, and 18 through 27. Please.
Madam Chair, I move for a deferral for item six till December 9th meeting. Item number nine indefinite. Item number 14 till December 9th meeting, and items number 18, 18 through 27 till the December 9th meeting.
Do I have a second, please? I give a second by Commissioner Klein, please.
Mr. Tahan, is the item number six an indefinite deferral?
30 days.
30 days. Okay, thank you. Okay, calling for vote, Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Kostin is absent.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Absent, sorry. Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horstley is absent. Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
And Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight to zero, agenda items six, nine, 14, and 18 through 27 have all been deferred. Item six for 30 days, item nine indefinite, item 14, 30 days, items 18 through 27, 30 days.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just a quick housekeeping issues to help with the sound. Just as a reminder to those that have microphones, if you're not speaking, please make sure you turn off the mic so that it doesn't cause any feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business will address those that have been placed on the consent agenda, and our Vice Chair, Commissioner Weiner, will take care of this portion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, we have nine items on the consent agenda. First one is item one, Life in His World Christian Ministries for a conditional use permit for religious use at 6620 and 6608 Indian River Road. Is there an applicant in the room here today? Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Rodney Flores, Medical Group Engineering. Madam Chair, other members of the Planning Commission. I will be standing by for any questions you may have, and also Pastor Ernie De Vega is available as well.
Are all the conditions agreeable?
Sir?
All the conditions agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Is there any opposition for this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Jack Wall is going to read this in the record for us, please.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for religious use to construct a two-story church on 0.75 acre vacant parcel, Zone B2, community business. As zoning ordinance requires a freestanding religious use be on a parcel of at least three acres, a deviation to the minimum lot area requirement is requested. The church building is proposed to be constructed in the rear of the property with parking situated in the front of the site with front edge along Indian River Road. One vehicular ingress egress access point along Indian River Road is depicted on their submitted plan. The rear property line abuts residentially zoned parcels. Therefore, a 15-foot wide Category 4 landscape buffer is required. The proposed building appears to be generally attractive with pre-finished metal wall panel, simulated wood plank, light gray accents, and a gray stone slate base. The proposed parking area consists of 37 parking spaces, which meets the minimum parking requirement of one space per five seats or bench seating space in the sanctuary as set forth in the zoning ordinance. Typically, Sunday service and Sunday school is planned from 11:00 to 12:30, while other services such as prayer meetings, youth groups, rehearsals, and board meetings, which are less populated, will be held during the week, weeknights between 6:00 and 8:30, and on Saturdays, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Staff recommends approval. Conditions are acceptable to the applicant. Therefore, we have placed this agenda on the consent, we place this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. The next item is item number two, Brandon and Samantha Hathaway for a conditional use permit for outdoor recreation facility at 5025 Cullen Road. Is there an applicant available? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Samantha Hathaway.
Brandon Hathaway.
In our morning briefing, we looked at item condition number one, and we've extended the hours from 9:00 to 8:00, or to 9:00 PM, 8:00 to 9:00 PM. Is that, are you agreeable with that?
Yes.
Acceptable? Okay, just want to make sure. And all the other items are acceptable with?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Redman can read us into the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. This is an application of Brandon and Samantha Hathaway for a conditional use permit, and in particular, a batting cage out there, at their, at their home, very, very near where I live, by the way. This is a 1.19 acre parcel that zoned our 40 residential within Lakeview Park. The applicant was simply unaware that this batting cage, which they use for their own personal use for their children and for their children's friends, required a conditional use permit, brought to the city's attention, and so they've applied in that regard. This morning in our discussion, we came about the idea that in the summertime, it's light until 9 o'clock very, you know, very commonly, and it's not inconceivable that, that kids would want to be in the batting cage, you know, 8:30, 8:45, something like that. So, that was the purpose of extending those hours. There are a couple of conditions that the city staff put on the, on this, opening the structure up so that three sides of it are open such that it continues to be an outdoor recreation facility. It's a very routine thing for people to have recreational facilities in their backyard for their children and their children's friends, so this is very much a housekeeping order. There is no opposition. Staff recommends approval, and the Commission concurs by consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. The next is item number three, Rosetta Denise Secanta for a conditional use permit for assembly use at 2014 Atlantic Avenue. Is the applicant available? Welcome. Please state your name for the record, and I hope I didn't make it tear it up too bad.
Rosetta Secante.
Oh, that was close. There you go. Are the conditions acceptable?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Alcaraz would like to read this into the record for us.
Thank you. Agenda item number three at 2014 Atlantic Avenue for a conditional use permit for an assembly use. The 14,408 square foot parcel on property zone Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code District has a mixed retail on the first floor and 7,100 square feet of space on the second floor, which was formerly Shaka's Live Entertainment. The second floor space is proposed to use as an indoor wedding and large gathering space. Therefore, conditional use permit for assembly use is requested. The applicant has been hosting ceremonies and receptions at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront for the past six years, and at this site, they will be proposing to hold indoor weddings and receptions and private events, live music and other celebrations daily. There's no parking requirements for this use. The proposed conditional use permit for assembly use, with the staff's opinion, is acceptable with this venue within the vibrant mixed retail resort area and aligns with the vision of the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan 2030 to accommodate events and gatherings in this area. Based on the considerations stated in the report, the Planning Commission has approved or is recommending consent for the application with the conditions listed in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. The next is CSA Virginia Beach for a modification of conditions at 5070 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Here comes the applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, my name is Jeff Odson.
Are all the conditions acceptable?
They are. We've seen them, they, no issues with those. I would like to thank Wa for his guidance on this application. When I first submitted, he came back with some very good input on how we could make a better site plan, and it resulted in a layout that was more conducive and basically internalized our parking, so I'd like to thank him for his help on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Redman can read this in the record for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. This is an application of CSA Virginia Beach LLC for a modification of conditions to the site that they own on Witch Duck Road, the corner of Witch Duck Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. It pains me to think that, we first did this in 2014, could it have been 2004, six years ago? Is that right? Good Lord. The original conditional use permit had a preferred site plan, and so because of the change that we have here today, it's necessary to modify those conditions. Specifically, this applicant, applicant would like to add 17,200 square feet of retail space in three buildings, two, as you can see from the site plan, two which face the corner of Virginia Beach Boulevard and Witch Duck Road, and then an eating and drinking establishment farther east on Virginia Beach Boulevard. There's an existing building on the site that's about 50,000, a little more than 50,000 square feet, which houses an indoor shooting range. When you add these buildings along with the shooting range, this would technically be short of the parking requirement. However, in thinking about the shooting range use, there are long corridors and large open spaces with bullets traveling through them where, you know, people don't go, and so that, you know, that one-size-fits-all requirement kind of doesn't really make sense. If you're familiar with this site, and in fact, you can even see it on the aerial, if you'll go to the aerial, this site is, is, you know, is constantly underparked, so there is no, no issue with parking in this case. The design is, the design is, you know, is quite attractive. They've pushed these buildings up on the road where we'd like to see them. The parking is behind it, and if you think about how Witch Duck Road is oriented, as we discussed this morning, there really isn't this kind of use on Witch Duck Road. There is some retail on Virginia Beach Boulevard in either direction, but Witch Duck Road, I think this has a kind of, adds to the dessert-versity of product here, which, which very frankly, we found attractive. We are unaware of any opposition to this application. The staff recommended approval. Makes sense to the Commission, and we therefore recommend its approval by consent. Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. Next item is item five, Greg Horvath for a conditional use permit for home occupation at 22, 2321 Vaughn Road. Is applicant available? There you go. Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. Greg Horvath and Carolyn Horvath.
Are all the conditions acceptable?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Inman can read this in the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. This property is in AG1, AG2 agricultural district, and the applicant wants to have a home occupation, operate a home-based business where he will process a limited amount of lumber for sale. The applicant's a member of the American Tree Farm system and practices silviculture management, seeks a use permit in order to, to produce the lumber for sale. The applicant says no more than three trees per year will be harvested from this property and processed into lumber, and selection and purchase of lumber will be done by appointment only by local woodworkers and hobbyists. Lumber will be stored inside existing barn building until it is sold. The staff supports this proposed application and finds it consistent with typical uses in the agricultural districts of Virginia Beach. The Department of Agriculture reviewed the request and has no objection. The impact to adjacent properties is inconsequential as only two or three trees are planned to be harvested each year. So, based on these considerations, there are several conditions that the sale will be by appointment only, the processing of trees will occur, will not occur more than five times per calendar year, and only occur between dusk, shall only occur... Says only occur between dusk and dawn, dusk to dawn. If that's right.
I believe that might be reversed. I apologize. For the record, we'll...
From dawn to dusk.
Yes, from dawn to dusk. We'll clarify the condition. Yeah, we don't want them to be cutting at 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that'd be a lot of lighting involved in that. Any sign identifying the home occupation will not be illuminated and not be more than one square foot in area and mounted flat against the residence. Based on these recommendations and conditions, we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Inman. The next is item number seven, Rita Wallen and Michael Wallen for subdivision variance at adjacent to 3652 North Landing Road. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Chairman Oliver, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the Wallens. We appreciate this item being on the consent agenda. The one condition recommended is acceptable to us, and want to thank Mr. Landfair, as always, for his excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mrs. Klein's going to read this in the record for us, please.
Thank you. All right. This subdivision variance is requested at the adjacent parcel north of 3652 North Landing Road. The property was originally created by deed in 1970, May of 1973, and recorded in the clerk's office in June 1973 after the requirement to subdivide property by plat was in place. The parcel contains just under 1.2 acres and exceeded all the dimensional requirements of the AR district at the time the deed was recorded. requirements of the AR district at the time the deed was recorded. However, the parcel was never the subject of a recorded subdivision plat as required by the subdivision regulations, and the property owners are requesting a subdivision variance to allow recordation of a subdivision plat to construct a single-family dwelling. Staff recommends approval, and the commissioners concur.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. The next is item number eight, Kendall Teague for a conditional use permit for a beauty salon at six thirteen North Lynn Haven Road. Mr. Burdon.
Again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, who is attorney representing Ms. Teague. All three conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable, and I want to tell Bill that we will definitely miss him, and good luck in your next endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Hearing none, Mr. Costin can read this in the record for us, please.
The applicant Kendall Teague is requesting a conditional use permit for a beauty salon proposed within an existing commercial building along North Lynn Haven Road on a property zone O-two office district. Zoning ordinance identifies the beauty salon as a conditional use within the O-two district, office district, and as such, a conditional use permit is required. Beauty salon and spa will occupy thirty-eight hundred square feet of the building with an additional two hundred square feet proposed for storage. The remaining two thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet of the building will be leased to a separate user for office space. The proposed salon will provide service, services such as hair treatments, facials, makeup, botox, body waxing, and massage therapy. According to the application, the beauty salon will have up to twelve employees. Typical hours of operation will be from nine AM to seven PM. The existing plant material of trees and shrubs shall remain along North Lynn Haven Road while additional turf areas and foundation plantings are planned. The planning commission recommends approval, I mean, the staff recommends approval, and the planning commission concurs.
Thank you, Mrs. Costin. The next is item number eleven, Atlantic Park Incorporated and City of Virginia Beach Development Authority for street closures. Locations, portions of south side of Twentieth Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenues, portions of south side and Twentieth Street between Arctic and Baltic Avenues, portions of west side of Arctic Avenue between Nineteenth and Twentieth Streets, portions of Nineteenth Street between Pacific and Arctic Avenues, all alleys and, and blocks surrounded by Arctic and Baltic Avenues and Nineteenth and Twentieth Streets. And I believe Ms. Aspie's going to come and talk. Who's the applicant? Yep, okay. Okay. Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Call Pepper on behalf of Atlantic Park, Inc., and all the conditions are acceptable.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Here we go. Hearing none, Mrs. Aspie's going to come read this in the record for us. Or Miss Moss. There you go. You know what I mean.
So the applicant's requesting to close portions of various rights-of-way on an assemblage of property owned by the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority. The area has been referred to as the Dome Site, consists of two blocks between Eighteenth and Twentieth Streets, Pacific to Arctic Avenues, and the block between Nineteenth and Twentieth Streets and Arctic to Baltic Avenues. If approved, the closed rights-of-way will become property, the property of the City of Virginia Beach Development Authority, who will then enter into a long-term lease of the combined Dome Site property with the developer. The proposed street closures include basically two categories of street closures. The first Nineteenth Street, all of Nineteenth Street, the full width of the eighty-foot right-of-way, is requested to be closed between Pacific and Arctic Avenue. This is above and below ground. This is an area where the, the wave, the Surf Lagoon will be if everything gets approved and moves on. Also, all of the alleys that are within what we refer to as the Treasurer's Block, surrounded by Arctic and Baltic, Nineteenth and Twentieth Street, those are full closures, above and below ground. In addition, there is a portion of Twentieth Street, on the south side of Twentieth Street, between, between Pacific and Arctic Avenue, there is a full closure request for five feet, and then an additional underground-only closure of four and a half feet on the block between Pacific and Arctic. And then the south side of Twentieth, between Arctic and Baltic, is a full closure, two feet increasing to five feet, and then an additional eight point one feet underground only. And lastly, the west side of Arctic Avenue, mid-block between Nineteenth and Twentieth Street, is a request for a full closure of eleven point four feet, and then an additional two feet underground only to accommodate the entertainment venue. As required by City Code, a viewers' meeting was held on October nineteenth. The viewers recognized that additional detailed studies and analyses are needed to determine what roadway and infrastructure improvements will be required to support the proposed development. These studies include, but are not limited to, a traffic impact study, site distance analyses, and detailed site plan review. Therefore, the commission, the conditions below have been crafted to require the applicant to provide these studies and improvement, and the improvements deemed necessary based on the information the studies provide. If necessary, the applicant may be required to adjust or modify the areas for closure. So with these added conditions, the viewers determined that the proposed closures will not result in a public inconvenience, and therefore, they have been recommended for approval by staff based on these seven conditions. And the planning commission also, I believe, recommends approval.
Great. Thank you. Miss Moss. Mr. Weiner.
Ashby, don't go away. I just wanted to, before you do go away, I just wanted to say thanks. I asked some questions of you earlier in our, in one break. I had the opportunity to visit with the, with the applicant and better understand their process, so I appreciate your, your help earlier and your patience and, and so, and my, my questions were all resolved. So thanks again.
Okay.
Thank you. The next items, item sixteen, which is a short-term rental. The planning commission places the following application for conditional use permit for short-term rental on a consent agenda as this item, as this application meets the applicable requirements of section two-four-one-point-two of the zoning ordinance. Staff support the application, and there is no known opposition for this, for the request for item number sixteen. So in saying that, I move for approval on the consent agenda item one, two, three, four, five, seven, eight, eleven, and sixteen.
You have a second? By Commissioner Klein?
Madam Chair, hold on. Madam Chair-
Oh, sorry.
-for the record, item number four, which is CSA Virginia Beach, I know the need to abstain from, the applicant is my client.
Okay. We're ready for the vote?
I got it. I just need to disclose something that, sorry about that.
It's okay.
That I am the adjacent property owner to item number sixteen, and I will be voting on impartial, but I will be voting for it. Thank you.
Are there any more? All right.
Calling for the vote. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver? By recorded vote of eight to zero, agenda items number one, number two with conditions as amended, number three, number four with Commissioner Weiner abstaining, number five with conditions as corrected, number seven, number eight, number eleven, and sixteen have been approved by consent.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all the applicants that came down today that had their items on the consent agenda. I'm sorry. And so this portion of our-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If somebody does stand.
Agenda is now done, and so those of you that had something on the consent agenda can now be excused, so we can make room for the people that have something on our agenda that are being heard today. With that, we will go ahead and get started on our next order of business, which is the remaining matters on our agenda. And would our city clerk please call the first item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First agenda item is item number ten, Burger Busters Incorporated, an application for modification of conditions on property located at twenty-nine O-two Pacific Avenue in the Beach District.
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Burdon, who is attorney representing the applicant, Burger Busters. Mr. Yanni Achelios is here, representing my client. This applicant is a locally headquartered business that operates dozens of restaurants in Virginia and the Mid-Atlantic. The CEO is Tassos Pafidis, who's a First Colonial graduate, who I grew up with and played baseball with when I was a little boy. We both were, as a matter of fact. This application involves the request to modify two conditions that were included with the 2018 approval of this special exception by city council. The first is condition number two, which involves the placement of actually two murals on the east-facing wall of the Taco Bell adjacent to Pacific Avenue. When we filed this application, we proposed one wall mural, and when we met with the PDRC of RAC, they were very pleased, very happy with what we were proposing to do, what my clients were proposing to do, and asked if we would do two. And so my clients considered that and decided that, sure, they would. So the application, that's condition number two, because the, all the elevations were part of the proffered approved special exception, that's why we're here. I like the wording of, of that revision. Appreciate Janice's, all of Janice's work on this. That wording will not require us to come back here in ten years or whatever when we need to put a different mural up. So that's something that the planning director will be able to approve at that time. The other, if that happens, the other condition is condition number eight, which involves the hours of operation. When, let me back up. This piece of property in the OR district can be utilized. If we closed the drive-thru, we could have a restaurant there, outdoor seating, serve alcohol till two in the morning. We can't do it as a Taco Bell because of condition number twelve, which we agreed to when we went through this process, that alcohol sales is not allowed here. But other than that condition and it being Taco Bell, that is allowed by right. The properties that surround us, Mr. Vacos, John Vacos, and Mr. Richard Dumar own the properties, the three properties directly to our west. They have absolutely no objection, and they supported this application from the beginning in 2018. The Yi family and Murphy's, which is a well-run establishment that everyone's familiar with on Pacific Avenue, directly adjacent to our northern boundary, they are also allowed to serve alcohol until two AM, and they have a lot of outdoor seating, but they run a great facility. The Cassir family owns the property directly to the south across Twenty-Ninth Street, also operated by Chichos. They too serve alcohol till two AM, operate till two AM. By condition, we took this to city council in 2018, working with Councilman Earn and the city council, who overwhelmingly approved this application. We were asked, while we could open the restaurant until one AM, not two, but close at one AM, that because of concerns that there might be problems with disruption because of the drive-thru, we agreed to a midnight, we'd close the drive-thru. There have been absolutely no problems. This, this facility opened in March of nineteen and has been operating for the last two summers. Haven't had a problem with anyone, have no knowledge of any problems whatsoever. And so we were coming in to do the mural, and we would like to, at the same time, as a part of the application from the beginning, to marry up the hours of operation so that the drive-thru can open till one AM, just like the business, and it's not open till one AM all the time. But the business closes at one AM, drive-thru closes at one AM. Staff has done all their research. We've operated the, the business. It's well-run, it's clean, it's done everything that we promised it would do, hasn't been a problem for anyone. And so we're requesting that that condition number eight be modified so that the business must close by one AM and cannot open until seven AM. The, excuse me. They have two emails, I wouldn't even call them position emails, but Mrs. Parker, who was here and said she didn't plan on coming and speaking, I think she wanted to speak about short-term rentals, but her email dated September fifteenth was to alert, she sent it to Mark Goldner, but Lance Goldner actually operates the apartments that are not adjacent but are on Twenty-Ninth Street. And if you read Lance's email, he's basically saying, we, I'm concerned that they may try to do it twenty-four-seven. He didn't say that he's had a problem, because there haven't been any problems. He just doesn't want us to operate around the clock. We're not asking to operate around the clock. We're not asking to do anything other than marry up the one PM closing of the restaurant with the one, with the one PM closing of the drive-thru. Mrs. Parker's email also doesn't, doesn't really express any concerns that there's something that's going to take place because of the drive-thru being open until one AM. With all the activity at the oceanfront in the summer months and with the, with the surrounding uses, and as I said, you know, the issue, there are issues at the oceanfront, but I don't think the issues are, that we have at the oceanfront have a darn full thing to do with drive-throughs. We've got a whole lot of problems, but drive-throughs aren't one of them. Certainly not a drive-thru that closes at one AM, when all the business around us that are selling alcohol and, yeah, again, I'm not down on that either, but just the point is, it's not, you know, it's not Linkhorn Park. You know, it's not Croatan. So, you know, and these are good, local, community-oriented operators. They, they have a beautiful facility. It's been, they went to great lengths to design a facility that fits on that property and has not caused any issues or problems with anybody. Police have had no incident reports whatsoever in two summers of operation. So that's, and staff's recommended approval, and we would appreciate your recommendation as well. Do you have to answer any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Burdon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any speakers on this application? No? Are there no speakers? Okay.
No, ma'am, we have no speakers for this item.
Thank you. All right, then I'm going to close it and open it up to the commission. Go ahead, Mr. Redmond.
I move approval of the application.
I'll second.
I, um, I do, I do have a little bit of discussion on the hours. I'm not comfortable with it. We spent a long time when Taco Bell came in originally about those hours, and so on that, I'd like to keep them as they were originally conditioned in the application.
Can you provide some background for those of us who weren't here, please?
The background on that was that, gosh, I'm trying to, we had a concern on drive-throughs at that time, and whether they were a good neighbor to the apartments that had just been approved and built there. And so with that being a drive-thru that has a tendency to be allowed with the speakers and the cars coming through, we didn't have a problem with them having extended hours within the restaurant, because that was inside the building, it was outside, and the noise that went on. And so, go ahead.
It didn't meet the Form-Based Code that was in, because drive-throughs aren't permitted. So they came from us for variance on that, or a change on that. I, I remember talking about the hours a long time, and we really pushed it up to twelve o'clock then.[1798.63] I remember talking about the hours a long time, and we really pushed it up to 12 o'clock then. I don't know, I kind of, the way Mr. Burdon's bringing to us now, it's true. I mean, there's no opposition to it, so I don't see why. There was some opposition to it, and the people in the apartment complex were coming out and saying there's opposition. The people that live there say there's opposition, but there's none. So it's kind of hard for me to say no to it.
Yeah, I mean, the hours would be a problem if there were a problem with the hours. But there's no problem with the hours. To hear Mr. Burdon obviously wants to say something, but give me, give me my piece first, okay? Then you can go. He's, Mr. Burdon is not shy, but I'm not either. If there were, if there were, if there were a problem, then that would be one thing. So I don't know, I mean, you're a bad neighbor if you've demonstrated, you know, bad neighborliness in some way, but, and Mr. Burdon, I think, is exactly right. There's a lot that goes on at the oceanfront that's a lot louder than a drive-thru and a lot later than 1:00 a.m., and it's not connected to a Taco Bell. So I don't understand what the objection would be to extending those hours to match what the restaurant itself does. If you can sit down in it, why can't you drive through? And particularly in the ages of a pandemic, when most people would prefer to drive through rather than to get out and go into a restaurant, it seems to me that makes more sense than ever. I don't know what the problem would be, so. And I have to say, I love the murals. I mean, I think that, you know, we don't spend enough time, in my view, on aesthetics in what we do, and when you can add some visual interest like that to a building, particularly one that fronts a roadway like this one, you know, I think it's a great improvement. And whoever designed that, those murals, murals at the end of Oceanfront kind of tend to look a little bit the same too much to me. And this doesn't look, this doesn't look like this. They, this is cool, I think. So I love the visual interest and the diversity that it brings to the built environment. I can't imagine what the issue is with the drive-through, so that's my view. Thanks. All right, there he is.
Commissioner Klein?
I respect the concerns that you had initially when this Taco Bell went up. It sounds like, based on the staff report, that they've spoken with police about the area. There have, in that timeframe, there haven't been issues. And so perhaps they have proven themselves to be a good neighbor. I like the idea of the inside and outside hours matching up or the outside hours being longer than the inside hours, is I think what we usually see. So I hear your concerns and where they came from originally, but it seems like at this point, they've shown that they can be good neighbors.
Yeah, you know, I think we've clarified what our original concerns were about outside speaker and so forth, that that would be disturbing to the apartments that were, had just been finished. One of them had been in place for a while, and another building is just being occupied and leased up. And so I'm sure there was an orange sign that went up to announce this application and this change, and there's nobody here to say that there's a problem. So I guess there's no problem. That's mine.
Jack?
I think originally, I believe I opposed this, this application, if I can remember right. And I think the grounds were, you know, just that we wanted, or at least I personally wanted to comply with the, you know, the standards that were, were in place and be consistent throughout the oceanfront. And there's, and there's standards. I don't think we've had any, any applications, you know, for additional drive-throughs, you know, restaurants of this nature at the oceanfront since, since then. I mean, that doesn't mean that we won't have others. But, so I think that was my position at that, that time. But, you know, I think that aligning the hours, you know, kind of makes sense. I don't, I don't know if an hour really makes that much, it's going to make that much of a difference. You know, it makes sense to align the hours. I mean, I think there are Taco Bells throughout the area that, that actually have longer hours, like 3:30, 4:00 a.m. So I think that's what somebody, when they're saying 24 hours, may have been implying was that they're stretching well into the, into the morning. I mean, not that 1:00 a.m. isn't already into the morning, but, so, so, yeah. That's my, my position.
Thank you. Mr. Burdon?
What I intended to make, if you could put the composite map up. The, Mr. Brian Large, Ocean Realty, who's a compositor, all right. The, wow. When we were going through this process, they were, they were just beginning to construct the units along 30th Street. High-end condominium units. And they support this application, and they have no problem with this. I just want to make that, everyone aware of that. There's a substantial distance between all of those, because there's parking for Murphy's. The speaker for the drive-thru is designed so it's right up against the building, and they have a speaker that does, they've used the best you can get, so you don't have any, you know, loud noise anywhere. So they've done everything, because they are local, they are local people, to make sure that this was and is a extremely well-run and non-controversial facility. And that was a promise we made to council, and I'll sit down and shut up.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. All right, right now, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Redmond and a second by Commissioner Klein. Can you call for the vote, please?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By recorded vote of eight to zero, agenda item number 10, Burger Busters Incorporated, has been approved.
Thank you all.
Our next item of business is agenda item number 12. And Madam Chair, we do have four speakers for this one. Agenda item number 12, Rickert Family Living Trust, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 349 Norfolk Avenue in the Beach District. If the applicant or the representative approaches podium, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having Rob and I here. My name is Zinta Rogers Rickert and Rob Rickert. We'd like to share with you our, our experience as longtime second-home resident owners and only a temporary short-term renter for, renters for necessity rather than profitability. When we purchased the property in 2005, it was bought as a primary residence. Rob lived here in Virginia Beach, I live up in Fairfax City. And for seven years, it was the primary residence. And only for the last eight years have we rented for approximately 12 weeks, no more than 15, in the course of 52 weeks. We are down here every single month. We have a 94-year-old mother and family in this area, and it is our second home. Our tax person doesn't appreciate really the fact that we use it so much. It causes tax issues and all of that. But it, at the time, when he decided to move up to Fairfax, because I had a long-established clientele with my business, we had four girls still to go through college and five potential weddings for our girls to plan. So in order to keep the place, we were one of the first in our community, Lake Station, to look into short-term rentals, because they are not in any way restricted in our condominium documents. So for eight years, we've managed the second home and occasionally rented to non-family, non-smoking, no pets, and generally one car and no more than four people to unit. To give you some idea of who the people are that use these short-term rentals, we've had people as far away from England and Australia. Recently, someone came from Arizona for a wedding and more local to the area. You have lots of people that come to rent to participate in the local cheer events, fishing, and softball competitions. And our favorite families are those that come to spend more time with their son or daughter, being before they see them off to serve in the military. Only once, and I stress, only once, in eight years has a neighbor ever brought it to our attention that a renter was noisy, and we immediately remedied the problem. Rob and I are at the condo once a month, anywhere from three to seven days every month. As you can see, we, I have my ECSC shirt on, and we, actually, I have Neptune on. We like to participate in a lot of the weekly events, and we are big promoters of the Virginia Beach over-Ocean City-type events to all of our friends and family and those that we advertise to in the Fairfax area. I think it's important that this board understand our Lake Station community. There are a total of 32 units, divided into three independent sections. The far west section has two townhome-style units, both rented yearly, and the same owner owns both and is responsible for all of its maintenance. The far east cluster of buildings has a total of 18 units and three, with three separate entrances, and they are responsible for all of their own maintenance. One family owns three of those units. The breakout of the, this section of three buildings has six units that are second homes, six are either full-time rentals or short-term rentals, and six are full-time owner residents. Recently, one of those owners, who wanted to change from a short-term rental to a yearly rental, had to, within the first 30 days, offer $3,000 to the tenants she had rented to. It was a father-and-son scenario to get them to give up keys, because there were so many complaints and violence and drug use by those tenants that she was trying to go to a yearly basis. Currently, another unit may have, it's rumored that there may be a drug dealer in the, in that section of buildings, and neighbors are walking on eggshells there. On a yearly lease, the rent is only about $1,500 a month, whereas on a weekly rate, you can rent it for $1,300 to $1,500 a week. So it's, it's safe to assume that it's a much more affluent temporary renter, even when there are problems that occur, which, again, we've only had one in eight years. Our two-building cluster has a total of 12 units. Three and a half of them are full-time resident owners, three full-time rentals, and five and a half are second-home owners of those 12. I reference it in that fashion, because there is currently one owner that is between a full-time resident and going to have to rent, because he's in, in the military and may be transferred. This means half of our neighbors aren't even there most of the time, summertime or otherwise. On a couple of occasions, our second-home neighbors from Pennsylvania have actually rented our unit two when more family was coming. What further makes our unit location within the community unique is we're in the crux of a building. There is no access, nobody really sees our place. It's very private and quite, it's on first, it's a first-floor unit as well. So nobody's walking behind us, we have no way of accessing or exiting the community from the back of our place unless we go around, you know, just around the building and our one neighbor's deck. As for any shadow lawn neighbors, we have one neighbor across the pond that can see our condo. Our community as a whole is a bit, is an island in and of itself. With an abundance of parking, there are 48 spaces for the 32 units. We sit and are located on a busy street, Norfolk Avenue. It's well-traveled at all hours of the day. And we, and we're directly across the street from a seedy hotel called The Marlin. Except for roughly 90 days of the year, Lake Station is a mini ghost town, and many of us love it. With work, events, activities, restaurants, and more, it's rare that we run into any of our neighbors during any of those times, except for an occasional trip to the dumpster. The 12 to 15 weeks a year that I referenced that might be rented out on a short-term basis is rarely in a row. It's not just during the summer months, this could be over the course of a whole year. We have had the same local manager and cleaning lady for those eight years. She lives approximately one mile from the condo. We have a lease, we require a cash deposit, and we are, and all renters are 25 years or older with four adult maximum. We are very active in our community, whether it's cleanup, organized cleanups for the pond, and, and Rob has served for, on the board for the last, for 10 years as the community president, and has once again been elected to the board. The community has no rules against short-term rentals, and we have self-managed with great care our second home. We want to keep the place, and only by allowing for a few weekly rentals is that going to be possible for us. Our hope is that our kids and grandkids will continue to love their visits to Virginia Beach as we have, and this allows us to be regularly here with family and Rob's 94-year-old mother, who is in a memory care place. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Does anybody have any questions for this applicant? Yes, Mr. Weiner.
Did I hear you correctly? You've been renting for eight years?
Yep.
How long have you been registered with the city paying taxes?
When they sent, they sent me a notice back in, I want to say, February of 2018. They sent me a notice to go down to the city council. I mean, I've always paid taxes through our, through our accountant for rental income.
Right.
They sent me a notice in February of 2018 saying that you needed to come down here and register, which I did.
Okay, hold on a second.
Okay.
Question for staff. What is the date of the fathering, grandfathering? Isn't it July of 2018? That is correct, it is July 2018. So if he's been paying taxes, why isn't this grandfathered? That is a very good question, Mr. Weiner. When they said that, I've been trying to search that as well at the moment, so. If you'd like to keep going with the questioning, I'll see if I can. That's really it. Now, just, we're going to check some things out, that's all I have right in a second.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I think we have a couple of speakers, and so we'll come back to you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we have four speakers. And before I call them, I just want to remind everybody that speakers have three minutes each. First speaker is Benham Malcolm, to be followed by Thomas Belvin.
Welcome, and if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Benham Malcolm, and my family has lived at 319 North Avenue since, so has owned 319 North Avenue since 1998. My family and I have been heavily impacted by short-term rentals for the last two and a half years that have occurred within our community. This is a precedent-setting application within the Lake Station community of 32-bedroom units. If approved, there will likely be five more applications filed in the next 16, 90 days by other neighbors that are currently doing unregistered rentals. This is the start of a motel within our community that is zoned as a apartment 18, A18. Everything about our building construction, our parking, OHOA structure, management company, contract, utility, security, maintenance, is all designed for single-family, long-term occupancy kind of rental, residents. Our community has spoken before in opposition to short-term rentals. On July 8th, this planning commission voted 7 to 2, denied the application for 323 Norfolk Avenue. For unit 323, the email opposition letters represented 47% of our community. For today, 38% of our community has written opposition to the emails. During the commission view of July 8th for 323, Mr. Horsley said, "I think this is one incident where a short-term rental conditional use permit has come to life and has made these problems evident, because the neighbors have a right to come and voice their opinion." So I think this ordinance is really working here, so I'm going to support the motion for denial that Mr. Alcaraz has made. Mr. Horsley is correct. The CUP process is working, and our neighbors are opposed to approval of the application for 349 Norfolk Avenue. The overall message from our community is clear. We want to be a residential community, not a motel. Please honor our desires. In terms of violations, on June 29th, the applicant was notified by enforcement, by zoning enforcement, needs to register a short-term rental. From then through last weekend, 349 continued to do short-term rentals. The applicant communicated that he had been paying his taxes and was grandfathering short-term rentals. We all believed him. So as a result, we didn't bother to complain or file issues with the city during the course of 2020. Running before approval, same issue that was discussed during the review for 323, when Ms. Oliver and Mr. Graham had the discussion that, quote, "The application, they did not follow the rules. So by passing something in this way, we're almost rewarding bad behavior." Approval of this application for 349 would be rewarding bad behavior. A former long-term member of the planning commission said that the developer has an obligation to minimize the impact to surrounding neighbors. In this case, you are the developers of a neighborhood impacting, unregulated motel, one room at a time with individual owners for every room. Please, let's put heads in hotel beds that are nearby, not in Lake Station condominium beds. Please minimize the impact to our community by denying the CUP application for 349. Thank you for your time, and what questions do you have?
Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? Yes, Mr. Redmond.
Can you speak to this unit in particular? I mean, you said you've been impacted by short-term rentals. Are you talking about the, what they own?
I'm talking, not about the community in general, it's been impacted significantly by short-term rentals.
So you're not talking about this application?
This particular unit is not. This particular unit is not what I'm referring to specifically.
Okay.
But the application does include violations that we're doing short-term rentals on a weekly or less than weekly basis during the course of 2020 and as the applicant has already indicated, he's doing it from all time.
I appreciate it. You answered my question. I will say, I entirely disagree. I think the conditional use permit process, and this has been a disaster. I think it's ripe for abuse. It's altogether too objective. I think the course that we're on, which I may not support in the end, to make the law much more objective and much more certain about what does and doesn't qualify makes way more sense than what we've been doing. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, I just want to clarify one sentence that you had. Did you say you spoke to the applicant about his short-term rental directly? Have you had a conversation with this applicant?
I have not had a conversation, I've had a conversation about short-term rentals in our community associated with the last one with Rob. I did not have a conversation with him directly on 349. I did not know about it until the board showed up out on the street.
Okay, thank you. I thought, I wasn't sure if I'd misunderstood you because you said something about him being grandfathered, that he had said he was grandfathered.
The word within the community was that Rob, we knew, we knew he was doing some rentals, but we thought he was qualified and we had heard that he was paying his taxes. He told me that himself. And so that's why we didn't buy, we all thought he was grandfathered.
Okay.
When I contacted Summer about the application, I asked, "Why wasn't he grandfathered?" And she said, "Well, he wasn't paying his taxes."
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Good question.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Redmond.
Could you please tell us again your address and where you are relative to the applicant's property?
Yes, my address is 319 Norfolk Avenue. As was pointed out previously, the community consists of a building of 18 units and a building of 12. I'm in the building of 18 units, I'm up against Lake Holly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Belvin to be followed by Lee Jones Hubert.
I am Thomas Belvin of 313 Norfolk Avenue, part of Lake Station condominiums. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed CUP for 349. And here are some points that support my opposition. In our bylaws and rules for the condominium association, the use of each unit is expressly restricted to single-family use and occupancy only. Two, while the mitigation of a rented parking space in the nearby parking garage may be adequate solution for a short-term rental using single-family detached home, in this case, a shared parking, guest parking does not work. There is no way to hold a short-term rental renter accountable for not using the guest spaces, thus impacting all other owners. Three, all owners personally share an inside stairwell foyer, external keyed security door with each building section of six units. Management of the security door key and the constantly changing short-term rentals will greatly increase risk to all residents. This is particularly troubling during a pandemic. Our community is not a hotel and it's not designed or constructed as one. Who do I and my family turn to night or day for noise, confrontation, or security issues? Call 911. The burden is on me and my family to confront, investigate, and initiate enforcement. Number four, this application's not been reviewed or discussed or voted on by Lake Station HOA board or unit owners, and it hasn't been signed by, the application itself hasn't been signed by the board as per process. So final few thoughts. The current short-term rental ordinance, rules, and regulations are really designed for single-family detached homes. Condominiums with shared living spaces like security doors, internal stairwells, rear decks with shared stair access and shared parking really do not apply. Two, there's all, there's no clear enforcement process for short-term rentals in condominiums. It's all on me, my family, and my neighbors to regulate. If a renter misbehaves, then the owner can just keep the security deposit. The city may find the owner, but there's really no accountability for following the rules, especially in real time. I anticipate calls to 911. Also, once approved, the short-term rental owner has five years and an automatic renewal for the CUP. The requirements for the CUP keep changing, it appears, because they keep getting negotiated between the city and the applicants, which is really strange to me. So given that the short-term rental ordinance is planning to be changed in January, wouldn't it make sense?
Thank you very much, Mr. Belvin.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Lee Jones Hubert to be followed by Virginia Portalatin.
In November 2013.
Sir, if you, before you get started, I just would like to ask you if you would state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lee Jones Hubert. All right. In November of 2013, my wife and I purchased property at 325 Norfolk Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia 23451, Lake Station condominiums. This is our second home, a place where we would come to relax and enjoy the new community as well as the beach. There have been many times that we have talked about even making this our primary home. We're aware that the investor in 349 has applied for a CUP, making short-term rentals legal in our community. We oppose this for the following reasons: Privacy. Privacy is a main concern of ours and we know many of the residents in our community and feel that if short-term rentals become legal, our privacy would be compromised. Short-term renters come and they go and there's no way of telling, you know, who's supposed to be on the premises and who's not at Lake Station. Since our community is not a hotel or a motel, you know, where you have like a desk clerk or a security guard or some means of social control there, there is no one to keep the peace except for the investor who lives 200 miles away. And, and the bottom line is then calling 911. And then there's lesser things where we wouldn't call 911, like spillage of trash and things like this. So we want to be able to keep the peace in our community. Another is the noise and safety. Even though you might have four to six occupants in one unit, as in the past, short-term renters often have friends in nearby hotels and motels, and they come over and join the party as well because there's a larger premises there. At times, we have seen dozen people on one of the decks that's made for about four people. Large amounts of trash collected in the parking lot, large, and, you know, a lot of the common areas as well. As you've heard from the others, you know, we do have a corridor that you must go through before you get to your unit. Lake Station is being updated with, with, that we are, we're getting new doors and we're getting a coded keypad. But in short, the term rentals become, if the short-term rentals become legal, we would feel very unsafe knowing that the code's out there and that we would be giving out to short-term renters. So pets are allowed at Lake Station, however, there's a leash law, and a lot of times, short-term renters aren't aware of this. And we've had some issues with that. Parking's another issue at Lake Station. Each condo is assigned a numbered space and two guest passes and a numbered spaces.
Mr. Hubert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Time's up. Oh, hold on one second. Mr. Weiner has a question for you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch. Where was your condo compared to the Ricketts?
It's in the building that's catty-cornered toward the building that he's in, on the same floor, but it's in the other building, catty-cornered to his, maybe two buildings maybe 50 feet apart.
How long have you been in yours?
Seven years.
Seven years. Have you had any complaints at all against the renters in his condo?
Well, we don't know where they're going when they go through the front door, whether they're going to his or somebody else's, we never kept track of it. We did have some issues with the parking where people were coming in and parking in the fire lane and leaving their vehicle there for a long time while they unloaded, and then we pulled up our spaces right next to the parking lane, and they've gotten very belligerent with us, like, "Can't you park somewhere else?" And they're not really understand the concept that people live here. They think that we're just another short-term renter like them. So there's been that, and I don't know specifically that they were staying at that place, and I don't know specifically that the trash that I pick up out in the parking lot the day after somebody's been there was amicating in that specific place. My main concern is we don't want to start a precedent here.
How many units in your condo, do you know, I don't know, you may not know this. How many units in your condo are short-term rentals? Hold on. I'm just curious if you know, because I received a letter, we received a letter from Thomas Ellis stating that, says, "Since this is the first unit to officially be going in front of planning, the other units have withdrawn." I feel like speaking out, so I'm just curious, as he's saying in his email that there are no other units. I'm just asking.
Well, I'm finding that out now, but at the time that I'm being confronted by this short-term renter, I didn't know.
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I didn't know at the time, but I am learning that now.
We'll have to ask that, we'll have to ask staff that question. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we, Mr. Dehan, do we, I know, I'm just going to ask this while we're waiting. Do we know how many registered short-term rentals are in this building?
According to the information we get from the Commissioner of Revenue, and again, these haven't been checked to see if they are, this just means they're registered and paying taxes. Whether they did it before July 2000, or July 2018 or not, has not been checked for these. There are four. Two in one, two in the one building where 349 is located and two in the adjacent building.
And those are four that have been in front of us?
No, I believe that there was only, was there one? There was one in front of us? Summer, you want to come up?
So there's been one that's been withdrawn that went through the conditional use permit process. There are four according to the Commissioner of Revenue's office, which are registered. Zoning office has received two short-term rental registrations of those and received three letters because issues, notices of violation were sent to them that they were operating, that they needed to come in conformance with the proper paperwork. We have received three letters that they have either stopped operating of those addresses, that have either stopped operating or are during long-term home share, they are not operating short-term rentals, and there is one in which there is a violation in process.
Okay, great. So as of right now, this is the only one that we have seen all the way through the process?
Yes, the other one was withdrawn before city council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So just to clarify, Madam Chair, so it was heard that the commission recommended denial for that one application and the applicant withdrew it before it went to the city council. Okay.
Yep, Mr. Weiner and then Mr. Redmond.
I remember that, and that particular one, we denied, they went forward, and they pulled it out, but they were not paying, they were not grandfathered. That one, I remember that one completely, but I'm getting at, they weren't grandfathered, so that's why we denied it also. There were a couple of other things too.
There were a lot of other things.
There was a lot of other things too, but we denied that. I remember doing that, okay.
If I may also apologize, the question that you asked earlier, Mr. Weiner, we did contact the Commissioner of Revenue. According to their records, they were registered as of February 2019, so they are not grandfathered.
Mr. Redmond.
Well, now, I was just going to ask where we are with regard to the question about the grandfathering thing. That was the one thing, but I did want to add to that, in case you didn't notice, we just asked some questions and Summer just ripped off a whole bunch of stats that I thought was mighty impressive, so thank you for having all that information at your fingertips. She was obviously prepared.
Okay, I'm sorry for the interruption. So I think, I believe we have one more speaker, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we have, our last speaker is Virginia Portalatin.
Welcome, and if you'll state your name, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Virginia Portalatin. I am an owner and resident located at 307 Norfolk Avenue at Lake Station. I've lived there for close to a year and a half. During this time, I've experienced the full impact and implications that short-term rentals bring to our community. When I moved in, 50% of the building was operating an Airbnb business. One of the units, despite having received the letter last July, continues to operate in my building. Among all the issues with short-term rental guests, which includes indiscriminately parking in any spot, inclusive of mine, excessive noise when entering and exiting our shared hallway and deck staircases, my most serious concern revolves around the violation of privacy and safety. My most recent disturbing incident occurred late last August. A group of men staying in the unit upstairs continuously used the deck steps to sit, smoke, and make phone calls. At one point, while sitting in my living room, I heard a voice in very close proximity. I looked out to see one of the men sitting on the steps, excuse me, leading down, just a few feet from my deck entrance, close enough that I looked him in the eyes. He could clearly look into my unit from where he opted to sit. Allow me to include, the same group used a charcoal grill at the bottom of the steps, a few feet from the deck staircase, and close by to the first-floor unit. After they left, I found they had dumped the charcoal on the grass. I share and use the steps with my next-door neighbors who are long-term renters. We use the deck steps regularly. This young couple, as well as their visiting friends, have never made me feel that my safety or privacy is violated in any way. My personal perception is that short-term renters come in with a hotel-motel mentality. There's an overall disregard with parking, noise, and respecting privacy. It translates into a major safety issue for our community. I stand here before you, pleading for your help to preserve the Lake Station community. Please do not approve the conditional use permit for 349 Norfolk Avenue. Please help us keep Lake Station a sanctuary for those of us who simply want to preserve our privacy, our sense of peace, and our safety. Thank you so very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Alcaraz.
One question. You, I just want to get some clarification. You had said 50% of the building, is that your building that you're in?
Yes, where I reside, when I moved in.
Let me, just, there's three buildings there, I'm just asking, your building was 50% Airbnb?
Yes. If I could clarify, it's, there's three entrances.
Okay.
Yes, in the same building that Benham Malcolm lives in, facing Holly Lake. So there are six units, and in, when I moved in, 50% of the building, three units, were running Airbnb. One continues as, as we sit here and speak.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come back up?
Though there are certainly items that both of us would like to respectfully disagree with, I have to say that I probably agree as a second homeowner with everything that has been thus far said by those that live, every one of those four comments were made by those that live in the larger building, and there have been some excessive issues in the past. When we speak with a potential renter, they are non-smokers, we don't allow pets, they're 25 years or older, we explain, he has a set routine that he explains, this is a residential community. We explain which parking space they have use of. We explain that there is something about the We explain that there is something about the street parking, which we have additional passes for, and the parking garage, et cetera. Everything, all of the concerns that they have raised, whether it's noise, whether it's privacy, whether it's trash, and boy, have we picked up our fair share on our dog walks as well. None of it necessarily is the short-term renter. A short-term renter comes there with a goal. They spend all day at various activities. They might be a participant of a particular event. They're there, more so than even the local residents, to spend time at the beach, check out the aquarium, and all of those places. You could run into any of these noise, privacy, et cetera type issues with long-term renters and/or residents. We have had and heard, because of his years on the board, of long-term owner residents harassing a number of second homeowners, tenants, et cetera. So, all of what they describe and are concerned about happens in just about every community. None of what they described has ever been raised with us and our twelve units between the two doors. When we bought the place, there are six units. Two are, two are second homes, two are full-time rentals, and two are, no, what I had said earlier. In our particular building, we've got three and a half full-time residents and three full-time rentals slash short-term, and then five of our units in our twelve-section building are second homes, so people are coming and going, whether it's family, friends, or, you know, a short-term rental specifically. You had a couple of points.
Just a couple of things. I did have approval, because at the time when I first signed the application, Summer can back me up on this. I was previously on the board. She checked with the city attorney, he told me to re-sign it, that I was on the board now, so that my application was within the system. So, Summer can back me up on that, the city attorney said I could sign as a board member for the application. Less than, you know, five percent of my rentals have ever required a second parking spot. That's just never been a problem with us, because we have sixteen extra spots on top of the reserve. Less than five percent of the time, does anybody ever need a second car spot? The people that spoke to you earlier, one of them actually, they actually tried to buy a second unit, that they were gonna do a short-term rental. They were unsuccessful in purchasing that unit, so now they're not worried about doing a short-term rental. And that's wonderful, but they would have done it had they. The other thing is, these are the same folks that have talked to me in the past. You asked them, have you talked to me? Yes, they've talked to me, and when I asked them earlier this year, when a couple of other people were applying, Rob, we have no problem with your unit, we have a problem with the ones over in our building where they're not managed. I've been in management for forty years, that's why I manage mine so selectively on the people that I actually let come use our place.
And I just want to remind everyone, this isn't your typical, we didn't buy this to make it a short-term rental investment property. We are here on a monthly basis with family, with activities. This is our second home, and so it's important to us that it be maintained. We take great care on considering who is coming into the unit. We have, because we have that private entrance in the crux of the building there, we have now put a keyed lock for if there is additional concern among our six in our building, that they don't want them coming down the hallway, they don't have to come down the hallway. We're the ground-floor unit. We, as owners, don't even run into half of our, half of the people that live there. At least two of the people here today, I've never met in the fifteen years that we have owned the place. So, we're very isolated when it comes to our particular location and the care that we take with our rentals.
And in terms of the security, I mean, I was on the construction for the last four years to get our buildings redone, being on the board. We had the same key for thirty-five years to fit the doors. Just now, we finally changing out the doors and the key, so that's never been, it was never an issue before with the keys. Having the same key for thirty-five years.
And we hope to retire here, so we, you know.
I mean, like I say, they, you know, everybody, I understand people have problems, and there's no doubt about it. It's all about the way you manage something, and I think that we've managed it properly. We're just looking to continue to do that if it's okay with this committee here, that's all we're asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Klein has a question.
I believe you said earlier that you have a local property manager for when you guys are in Northern Virginia?
Right, the lady lives up the street in Sawgrass, who's cleaned for me for the last five, six years. She actually manages, anytime I have any issues, she comes down, takes care of it. And then she's the first one on the scene, soon as somebody leaves, letting everything's fine, before I refund you the deposit. So, she's looking, she's my eyes and ears on the ground, and she's also, she's done such a good job. She used to clean all of our buildings for a while, and she was also cleaning for some of the other people in the complex.
Is her information either available to or provided to your direct neighbors?
Whether her information is provided to our neighbors, we're so readily available by our two cell numbers, but they know that we have someone who, if we can't physically be here within a short period of time, that she's available to us. Because Rob grew up in this area, we've got over forty volleyball friends that we could call on any one of them to replace a chain on the bike. We provide bikes, we provide all chairs. All of that is there, because it's there for our use as well. So, we regularly manage the place and are here, so to address any kind of issues.
Right, I think one of the ordinance that either just passed or will, is under discussion, is having somebody local. And you said that you're readily available by cell phones, so do your neighbors have your contact information in your building?
Right, I mean, even the people that stayed with us, they have my phone number, they have my email directly. Any, I mean, it's just, if you ever read any of my reviews, I've got four point seven out of five-star reviews for all my reviews, which is probably close to a hundred. Communication with us is what they rave about, they like about staying with us.
And only one person that tried to smoke in our unit did we have to retain their three hundred dollar cash deposit that they had to give us.
One time. One time.
And we don't rent during some of the events that the city chooses to hold in this area, because we are looking to have conscientious renters.
Mr. Redman.
Real quick, can you hit me with those dates again? You bought the unit when?
I bought it two thousand five.
Two thousand five, and you started renting it when?
Seven years later. We had a long-distance relationship for seven years.
My sister, who lives in Sandbridge, has a rental property, and she was the one that suggested it to me at the time. She said, you ought to be trying to, try to bring income in while you're not living there, if you want to try and keep it. And I had watched several people in our community lose their property. But they lose a property, because like us, they pay, we paid two seventy-five for our unit. The units went down to a value of about two hundred thousand dollars. So, we were underwater most of the time that we lived here. We've just finally come back out of that, but we just paid a twenty-eight thousand dollar assessment to do the, to redo our property there.
Yeah, a lot of people who bought property in two thousand and five suffered the same.
Everybody signs a lease, we have a lease.
Yeah, my sister had a rental agreement with her.
Their driver's licenses.
My sister had a rental property in Sandbridge, so she had a rental agreement, she gave me the rental agreement. That's what everybody signs off in initials for us. And like I say, again, some of the folks that talked to today, they've talked to me about it before. In fact, they had just talked about it earlier this year. Rob, we don't have a problem with yours, it's the people in our building, and there were a couple, Rick. The people in the other building had management companies that completely mismanaged it, and it was just a complete fiasco in the other building. I won't even dispute that, there wasn't. And I think that's why most of them gave up, because the fact being, they couldn't manage it properly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weiner.
Okay, I gotta ask, go back to these dates real quick also. So, you've been renting for the last eight years?
Right.
So, now, after talking with staff, you haven't started, you started paying taxes January of two thousand nineteen?
She, yeah, yeah, she just corrected me, it was two thousand nineteen. In other words, I got a notice in the mail, and we went down to the courthouse.
I mean, with everything going on in the world today, with short-term rentals in Virginia Beach, you didn't realize that you needed to start paying taxes before then, conditional use permits?
Well, like I said, I mean, I claimed the rental income on my taxes, I paid.
I'm just talking about the city, us in the city. You didn't realize, you've listened to the news with short-term rentals going on?
Right, exactly.
And didn't know that what needed to be done?
I did not know anything else until I got that, until I got the letter, I got the letter, we went down to the courthouse.
How did you get the letter? Did the Commissioner of Revenue's Office just send you a letter one day in the mail? Did somebody complain about you renting?
I don't know, I honestly, God, when I got, when I got that, I don't know how they got my name, except now all of a sudden it said, you need to come down here to the courthouse, register to start paying two dollars a night and eight percent of any revenues on my rentals, which I've done since, and right, I apologize, it wasn't two thousand eighteen, it was two thousand nineteen. So, I mean, the last thing I'd probably say is, I understand y'all have to make a decision, but with our community, if they want to change things, then they can change it with the bylaws. If the city okay's it and says it's allowed, that's what we're trying to do.
The city can't do anything with the bylaws. Bylaws is what you are, we are, what we do.
And I agree, that's, that's why the board is, board is okay with our rentals, short-term rentals.
Okay, yes, George.
So, in the staff write-up, I just want to look into this with the complaint. On June thirtieth, you got a, you were cited for a notice of violation for not applying for a conditional use permit? After you've been told or asked to apply with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office? So, this is June thirtieth, and you still hadn't, after applying for the, whatever application you need for the Commissioner of Revenue, on June thirtieth, you were given a notice of violation for not properly submitting the conditional use permit? Still, that was.
I can't tell you exact dates, I don't have any impression.
It's in your, it's in the report.
Okay, that's fine, okay, that's fine. So, I'm just saying to you, but Summer contacted me, I started working with her, and then at some point, whenever our original thing was meeting like this, I guess was gonna come up, we asked for a continuance at that time, and this was the date that we got.
I think what you're referring to is back in two thousand nineteen, when we went to the city, we paid, we signed up, we get their letters on a weekly basis, we know what we had to do there. We stood there and asked them, do we need to do anything more? Because all of that was just kind of getting started, and the person that we stood there and spoke with said, there wasn't any place else, there was nothing else we had to do, because otherwise we would have gone and knocked that out at that particular time. Because of the issues that were going on in the other building, and more attention was being paid as to the fact that there were now, we were the one and only short-term rental in any way trying to maintain our place so that we would have it for our retirement all of those early years. And as other people started seeing where that could be of benefit or profitability, et cetera, because there were some issues in the other building, someone brought ours to the attention. I mean, there is some animosity between, you know, as there often is in the condominiums. And as soon as we knew that we had to do, kind of like the softball thing, didn't, didn't know until we got that notice that we had to somehow do it, we even believed for a period of time, because we've been doing it so long, that we were, that we were grandfathered in. So, it, we apologize for any, you know, miscommunication there.
When they referred earlier to a building that they said was like fifty percent short-term rentals, there's a building that has eighteen units, each unit's got six units. That unit that has six units, possibly half of those could have been short-term rentals. It wasn't the whole building of eighteen, it was probably that building that had six units that had three short-term rentals in.
Okay, I'm not finished, sorry. Back to your local manager, so she's your, she's your cleaning person?
She's my cleaning person, she's my manager, I'm just saying.
So, she's a professional manager for the property?
Somebody has an issue, has a problem, she comes down there to correct it, whatever, whatever it might be, so that somebody's not gonna be upset with.
She addresses it at all hours, if any?
All hours, anytime. Her phone number's right in there when you come inside my unit. And like I say, her father and my, her uncle and my father worked together for years, for thirty years. I've, like I say, I've known her for seven, eight years. She's a, she's a very hard-working, conscientious lady who doesn't take anything, and she's over there immediately.
She's even monitoring some of the building stuff that's going on and bringing it to our attention and pointing it out. She's about fifty-two, fifty-four years old. She also cleaned for Lake Station Common Ground Area and knew what was going on better than anybody else in that community.
I got a question, I got, I got, so I just trying to get the dates straight again.
Sure.
Because you said a couple of things, and I'm, I just want to make sure that I, and maybe I'm gonna need Summer, because Summer's name keeps getting tossed up. But you mentioned that you thought you were grandfathered, but previously you said you didn't know anything about the short-term rentals, so.
Well, you're.
Let me just, let me just kind of finish. You bought it in two thousand five, you started renting it in two thousand twelve. January nineteenth of two thousand twenty, you got a letter from the Commissioner of Revenue, is that correct? Stating, in my.
I'm sorry, what date did you just say, January?
January nineteenth, two thousand twenty?
No, are you?
I'm sorry, twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, I'm sorry. January twenty nineteen, sorry, I left, I've got too many twenties in here.
And I don't know if part of the confusion was the, our unit used to be in our name, we switched over to a.
So, you, at January two thousand nineteen, you got a letter from the Commissioner of Revenue, out of the blue, asking you about your short-term rentals.
Actually, I think it just said that we, now if we are running a short-term rental, that we have to be paying taxes.
So, somebody has obviously brought your name up, because I don't think Mr. Kellum can just pull that, wrap it out of a hat.
I mean, did somebody in our community just say?
I mean, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, I just don't, I don't know that they do that, and maybe they do, and Summer can probably clarify that. And then, you didn't register, or you got a complaint, I'm sorry, you got a complaint on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, that you were still operating without a CUP, without filing the paperwork, or just operating illegally.
We thought we had done what we were supposed to in early two thousand nineteen. So, when the complaint came and we had to look into it, and at, we thought at that point that we were okay. We thought we had done what we were supposed to do. We didn't know that there was a second step to this scenario.
I'm, okay, I'm just double-checking, okay, great, thank you. Mr. Weiner? Are we all done? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So, Summer, do you mind popping up here real quick?
Yes.
I was just curious as far as what you, conversation you have with them as.
Yes, so, according to the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, they did receive, they did receive a notice in January of two thousand nineteen that they were operating short-term rental. From what I've heard, there is a software that the Commissioner of Revenue may use in which they were notified of this, and that they weren't registered. So, I'm sure that's why they reached out to them. And so, in February is when they obtained their business license with the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office. So, as a result, they do not meet that grandfathering requirement of July one, two thousand eighteen, for paying taxes. So, then we had that year, or that month, those couple of months between November one, two thousand nineteen, when the ordinance became adopted. And so, in June, June twenty-ninth of this year, two thousand twenty, is when Kevin Hirschberger received a complaint that they were operating without a conditional use permit. He sent out the notice. About thirty days later is when I received the conditional use permit application from Mr. Rickert, and so this is the process as it goes thus far.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we'll close this. Oh, sure, well, I'm, go ahead, I'm gonna close it to the public, and then go ahead and ask a question.
Granted, this is a completely different department. Do we know if it's in their workflow to advise registrants that there may be permits or other things aside from the registration that they need to do?
I don't, I'm unsure. I think it depends which avenue you take, whether you come in in person or do it online. I will say that I believe during the process, when I wasn't here for, as far as the initial short-term rental process with the city, that it's my understanding that we sent out letters to folks that may have been operating, so those that were on the registered list potentially, stating that they had to apply for a conditional use permit for the, for the people that we had information on that were operating. So, that was part of our proactive outreach at the time, based on the information, at least that I'm aware of, that we did send letters out to folks to remind them, you need to come in. Now, as you know, we get them trickling in and people saying they don't know, so I would take that for what it's worth, so.
It would be real helpful to us if we knew the protocol that was used at the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and whether they have a script that they're supposed to follow in telling applicants, so that, because we've had this, this come up, comes up all the time, all the time. Somebody, I didn't know, no one told us.
Right, I believe the timeline that this happened, when they went there, we have gotten a better rapport with the Commissioner of Revenue. We are reviewing all the business licenses also as well, and so we have a better rapport in providing information when there are issues or details that come up. At that time, we do understand, we've gone through this with other applications, there was a gap where the city wasn't doing, did not have any regulations in place, while the Commissioner of Revenue was just collecting the taxes. And so, that gave this false sense that someone did enough to get in the door. I think it was a matter of the timing, but yes, that, it is in the timeline. To this point, we have updated. To this point, we have updated our processes to make sure that we are, we are from moving forward since that issue came up, providing better information to applicants, so.
Yes, Mr. Redmond.
Yeah, I just, I mean, to what you say, I mean, I, we're so close to this, we think everybody's supposed to know all this stuff. And we had a batting cage earlier in somebody's backyard they didn't know they needed a conditional use permit for, and the assumption that everybody necessarily knows when things change, and they got to do this, and they got to do that, I think that's asking a lot sometimes of people. There are people who just operate without the legal right to do so, know full well they're operating without the legal right to do so, and we know that that occurs, but I do, I, you know, I, I think we assume too much if we assume that people necessarily know all these timelines and deadlines, and once you filed with the, this thing, then you don't, then you got to, I mean, they don't always know all this stuff, so, I mean, that, that's one thing I figured out in this process, is it is messy, like you allude to. It's just a messy process, and it's hard sometimes to sort it out.
George?
I know, I mean, they meet the regulations at 24, 241.2, I put a lot of weight on that, but then I also put a weight on the neighbors. I put away, I put weight on the parking, I put weight on the management. I don't like the parking. I, I know the staff's worked to get the parking, but when there's one parking per unit, and they need two, are they going to take someone else's parking? I, I don't, we, who, who monitors that? You know, I, I'm not sure who, or what happens when that happens, but I can see that there's a controversy on the parking lot when that does come. And because of that, and, and the opposition that's here today, unless anyone wants to say anything, I'm going to make a motion.
I also agree that the, the opposition can weigh heavily, and, and these community members feel very strongly. I think it, my, my focus is on the fact that the opposition was not towards their building, and that no one here had a problem with their particular short-term rental, which is in a different building. It sounds like the building that they are in, which is all the same one, is not a good place for additional short-term rentals, but I didn't hear anything about their unit specifically, which is in a separate location.
David?
Isn't this building the same as the other building, as in shared access, shared balconies? As, as the other building? If I'm not mistaken, Summer? Is that correct? I'm sorry, to get you keep walking back forth. Isn't this building the same as the other one, the shared balconies, the shared access to the buildings?
Uh, yes, I believe this one's on the first floor, from what the applicant said, it's just in a different condominium building. I think, I believe Terry Champion was located where those three are connected, and this one is located at the front, too.
But all units go through one, the two doors?
Yeah, there is the shared access ways, it's only for the ones within that building, so perhaps six units sharing one common access way.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that, that was one of the main reasons we denied the last one in this, in this location, because of the close, this access, and then the shared balconies, but that's my favorite.
With Ms. Klein's comments, I mean, I agree, I just, it's also due diligence for the owner to, to manage it, and I think there was some oversight, that they, I don't know if it was intentional, but it happened, and I have to, I'm weighing into that, so, but I think Mr. Redmond has a, his hand up.
Dave?
Thank you, George. No, I, I agree with Robin. I mean, I heard lots of, I mean, I agree with what these folks said, too, and, you know, it's, and you're exactly right, I mean, the, the, the structure of these buildings is such that would cause one concern, but the objections that I've heard are general objections. They don't apply to this particular unit, and, and we don't, I mean, I, that's why we're looking at each one individually, and it, these folks strike me as fairly conscientious property managers. They seem to be screening people very closely, they seem to be particularly concerned about, about how they manage this. I will also say, so, I'm inclined to support the application, and for the reasons that Robin stated, but, but I will also say, in a situation where you have, oh, look, trash in the parking lot, park, it's the eastern end of Norfolk Avenue, near the oceanfront, there are going to be people parking there because they want to go to the beach, right, and they have nothing to do with the condominiums, there will always be parking problems at this property, and there's always going to be trash in a multi-unit environment like that, and you don't know where it's coming from, it could be wind-blown for all we know. But in any event, you know, in an environment like this, where you do have a lot of second homes, people live in one place, they got a condo at the beach, they are routinely turning them over to friends and family, you let your neighbor, you let your, your neighbor go down to your place at the beach, your nephew and his girlfriend go down for a long weekend, there's coming and going all the time. The idea that this is all restricted to short-term rentals, coming and going and all that, I don't, just don't believe that. I mean, I think a lot of that has to do with people who own units, it's just the nature of those, of those kinds of properties, so, in any event, I mean, I don't, I don't like the opposition. What I mean by that is, I'm concerned by the opposition, I'm concerned by the nature of the buildings themselves, but it seems to me, if you look at these as individual cases, this seems to be one that is particularly well-managed, and I have seen places managed by professional property management companies, the names of which we all know, who do terrible jobs doing it. Don't know the lights out, don't know what's in the place, don't know what the hours are, don't know when the cleaning people's come, and so, that's not a fantasy either, but it does, it seems to me that gentleman said something very, you know, very telling to be, and that is, communication is the key, and I think that's dead right. You know, if you're talking to people, and you're on top of it, then these things run a lot better, so I'm inclined to support it for those reasons. Thanks.
So-
Jack?
Okay, hold on.
Yeah, that last application that we had was in this, in the Lake Station Condominium complex, was, we had very specific, you know, things, or there were very specific, you know, faults with the, with that application, and it wasn't necessarily the shared balcony or the space, I mean, there were some, you know, things that very, you know, very much stood out with that application, that, you know, brought to our attention, that there were, you know, problems going on with that, that unit. With this one, it's, it seems like it's been operating fairly well, and that it's been operating within the, the requirements of, you know, a, a unit or a residence that you would, you'd expect. You know, I, I feel for, you know, the residents that, that, you know, don't, don't feel that short-term rentals, you know, allow them to experience, you know, the sanctuary of a home that they, they should have, but, you know, in this case, it just seems like this, this application, and the people that are, you know, applying for it are somewhat managing it fairly well, and so, I'm going to, I'm going to add support in.
George? John?
I just joined this commission in February, I believe, and had it not been from my position here, I would have known nothing about requirements for short-term rentals. I missed out on air rights, a piece of property I own, because I didn't know what was going on. So, I understand sometimes when you're in business, you, there's something you might need to know that you don't know, I understand that, and I think they have the ability to prove that they've been renting for eight years, and just missed out on grandfathering. I mean, because didn't know I needed to do something to, to, to protect my, my right to grandfathering. So, I'm inclined to support this as well.
George, back in your court, you were making a motion.
I, I was, and I still will, so I'll make a motion that we deny it.
All right, I need a second, please. I need a different, I need an, what-
I'll make a substitute motion.
Thank you.
That we approve the application.
I need a second on the subsequent motion.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, it's not a subsequent motion or substitute motion, because the first motion died since there wasn't a second, so.
Thank you. We don't typically have this. Counsel has this more often than us.
I believe I did.
Calling for the vote to approve.
Hold on, once, yes?
I have to abstain from the vote on this. I, my firm represents Lake Station Condominium, I, I don't, I haven't heard any representative here, I don't know anything about what, what they may be thinking about it, but in an abundance of caution, I'm not going to vote. I'm abstaining.
And, and I'm sorry, your mic was not on. What are we, what are we doing?
We're voting for-
To approve.
Okay, thank you.
Calling for the vote on the motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12. Mr. Alcaraz?
Nay.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman is abstaining. Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By a vote of six to one, six for, one against, with one abstention, Agenda Item Number 12 has been approved. Okay, our next item of business is Agenda Item Number 13, and Madam Chair, we do have two speakers on this one. It's Rachel A. Dio, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental, on property located at 5528 Cabin John Drive in the Centerville District. For the applicant or the applicant's representative, please step forward.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Rachel Dio, and I am a registered nurse. I am applying for a CUP for my single-family detached home. I've noticed that there is a, a housing need for travel nurses and other essential employees with small pets. Hotels don't have dog parks, and after a long shift, people just want to, you know, they just want to go home, relax, and, you know, play with their pets in peace, so, I kind of wanted to open my home up to people in, in that type of situation. Thank you.
Our first speaker is Michael Kametz, followed by Barbara Messner.
Welcome, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name's Michael Kametz, and I am, I live at 50, 5869 Glenview Drive with my 98-year-old mother, suffers from Lewy Body Dementia. I had open-heart surgery this past February, and I opposed the short-term rental application. First of all, there's not enough parking on the, on Cabin John. People, it's a residential community, it lies in the Centerville District subdivision of Alexandria. There are a lot of people, a lot of families that live on Cabin John, they have multiple cars, they can't put all their cars on the driveway, so they park on the street, perfectly normal. The, my understanding is that you got to have a nine-by-18-foot space to park a vehicle according to the, your, the ordinance. One for each room. She wants to rent three rooms. This is a bedroom community, it's not a, a commercial business community. I, we don't need to have a conditional use permit for short, short-term rentals. This is in, as I said, Alexandria subdivision in Centerville. There are no major, or actually, I can say, there are no tourist attractions there. There's nothing, unless you consider Mount Trashmore II, which is down the road on Centerville Turnpike, across from the, the church that's there, as a major tourist attraction, or historical attraction. Nothing exists there. I don't believe that, that it, that we need to have a, what I would consider a flop house. Ultimately, you know, I don't want to live next to a flop house. And so, I ask that, that you deny the request, the application, because there is no, there is no reason to have a short-term rental in a residential community. And if I might, Appendix A of Sections 203 and 505 do not explicitly provide zoning regulations for single-family domiciles in a R5D residential community seeking a conditional use permit. And so, I think you need to go and look at that.
Sir, that, unfortunately, that bell was your time up, but I do have one question before you leave, and I just want to make sure I understood you, because you said, well, a couple of questions, I guess. Where are you located in proximity to this house?
Right next door.
Oh, you're next door, okay, thank you. And the other question, or I had, is that you, you, and I probably misunderstood you, was that you said that it, she had three bedrooms, as if she was going to rent out each individual bedroom versus-
That's what it appears from, from what I was able to discern.
Discern from the application?
Yeah.
Oh, no, she rents, the, the application is for renting the house as a, one unit, not as individual bedrooms, not as-
Oh, okay.
So, she would, the application is for her to rent it either on a, well, actually, because of the way the ordinance is now, she would rent it once every seven days-
Right.
If she was able to do that more than once a month, or whatever, to a family.
Okay.
Or, or one person, whoever would want to rent it, but she's not renting each individual bedroom out separately.
Well, that's, okay, all right.
I, I just wanted to make sure that-
No, that's fine, that's fine, but the problem that I have is, is, okay, so you're going to have someone, you know, if, if she's lucky to have, you know, someone come in and rent the, the house for no more than seven days, you know, how often are we going to do that? You know, we're in a, in a pandemic, we've got, have all sorts of protocols to try to keep ourselves safe from the COVID-19 virus.
Right.
Okay, and so, we're going to have trash that mounts up, I don't know if it's going to get blown all over the place, it's blown onto my property, you know, if there's tissues, whatever, it's a problem.
I, I understand, yes, sir. I think Commissioner Weiner has a question for you.
Sure.
You were talking about parking. Have you had any problems at all with this particular residence for parking situations, or any, any problems at all with this particular residence?
Yes, my property, that's, so that is, I can't, it's, yeah, Glenview, I'm on the corner of Glenview and Cabin John, so my property is on the other side of that blue box, okay? You see, you can actually see, right, right down by the street-
Sir, sir, can you go back to the mic, so we can hear you, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you can actually see, right down by the street, in front of my house, there's a vehicle parked, okay? My property line, as, as this bu, uh, blue block shows, goes right down the side of their driveway to the driveway apron, the pin is there, and so, it's always, there's always a vehicle parked in front of my property, my house, and so, it's a major problem. And during the evening, as you can see, there are other vehicles parked on the opposite side of, of the street on Cabin John, you can't really park on the, the house, where the house is located, other than in front of my property.
Okay, sir, I appreciate it, that's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just, Mr. Weiner, I would note, we've got some photographs here with three large pickup trucks in the driveway, I'm pretty sure they meet the parking requirement. I'm pretty sure they meet the parking requirement.
But if I might, sir...
Sir.
I didn't ask you a question.
Oh. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker is Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. Messner.
Thank you. Mr. Tahan and everyone else, I tried to have this rescheduled because the elections really aren't over yet. And I think it's outrageous to have this at 9:00 a.m. the day after the elections. Total lack of due process. One of my objections to this meeting was it was only five days advertisement in the Beacon. Only about 50,000 people get the Beacon. That's not how we should be notified. The entire city is being commercialized. I can't believe somebody cares more about, you know, taking care of somebody's dog on vacation. Our entire city is overrun with dogs. Air Beach is a dog park. You know, I listened to some of the things earlier today. It's just outrageous. And, you know, some of the people here who have direct conflicts with the beach, this one isn't the Beach District, and people who do abstain occasionally, they don't leave the room like Will Sessoms used to do. The increased traffic, you're, you're also allowing businesses in neighborhoods. Some people can sell guns out of their home. They're opening daycare, all types of things. Like I said, somebody said we're close to Mount Trashmore, the closest thing. There are shuttle buses that take people. The city's still planning to use the money for another something in the water and all these events and shuttle people all over the city. You know, they couldn't shuttle people to the polls. But, you know, as Mrs. Henley has stated, even though she, you know, it's just one person voting no, you don't have enforcement. There, there aren't enough people to enforce. And you're destroying the neighborhoods, plus the ability for somebody to rent long-term, for somebody to buy the house and to rent long-term. In the neighborhoods, it shouldn't be short-term rentals a week, especially during the pandemic. Why don't you wait until the pandemic is over before you even consider any of these? What is the bloody rush? So, I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
Would the applicant like to come back up, please?
While I can appreciate the concerns, there are a few issues. My rental is not so much for, you know, activities. It's more for medical professionals. You know, they come in here, they want to, you know, they need to find a place. They don't want to be by themselves. So they, yeah, they want to bring a pet to, to keep them company. And most of their contracts are for three months, so it would not be a weekly rental. They're here, yeah, they might want to go to the beach there, in Virginia Beach, but, you know, there's lots of hospitals around, a lot of dialysis clinics, and we need nurses. You know, we need essential personnel. And, you know, we would get more if they can bring, you know, their, their pets, their family, you know, so. And parking on the street is public parking. We, you know, as you can see in the pictures, there's no issues with parking. I myself had multiple cars, and I have never had problems with parking. So, you know, their issues is not valid. As you can see from the parking on the stop sign, there's plenty of parking there, plenty of other parking, and the one by his name, in front of his house, that's all public parking. That is not in front of his house. It's not my fault his parking, his driveway is short. But as you can see, I can fit three F-150s in mine, so I meet the regulations.
Mr. Weiner.
Mrs. Dio, I know you just said that you're, are you renting your house out on monthly rentals? Not, you're not going to rent your house out on a weekly rental?
No, I'm trying to get, you know, I'm trying to help with the medical professionals. Like I said, I'm a registered nurse, and we need help, you know? And people I know, travel nurses, they have, you know, they're single. They have, you know, a small dog or a cat that they want to bring with them.
Okay, so, so you are, it's going to be more, it's not going to be a weekly rental?
No. You know, but I want to follow the rules. I got to apply for it.
Hold on a second, I got a question for staff. Is that considered a short-term rental, since it's a monthly rental? Less than 29 days or less than 30 days?
All right, the, the term for a short-term rental is dependent on the stay length, so it's, anything less than 30 days is considered a short-term rental. Ms. Dio, if you don't mind, Madam Chair...
Yeah, right ahead.
Vice Chair. Do, do you plan on renting out for less than 30 days to anybody at any point in time?
It depends on their situation.
Okay, so this is more for flexibility for you?
Yeah.
Do, do you plan on being in the home when they're there? Or do you plan on renting the house out to them?
It depends on the situation. I myself would like to become a travel nurse.
Okay.
You know?
Okay.
Yeah.
I got a question. So, oh, sorry. Real quick, so then we should keep it as, as we're going now, just because it depends on the situation that she's doing for, okay?
Yeah, I, I want to follow the rules, so, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
George.
Are, are your, are your tenants all travel nurses?
I don't, I don't have, I've never tried. That's who, yeah.
You said you're trying to push for the medical field?
Right, you know, because if the, if the permit is, is approved, that's who I'd like to, you know, market. I, I tell my friends who know travel nurses, hey, you know, I'm, you know, I'm available, this and that, so that's who I'm trying to cater to.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Wall.
So you currently live there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to close the commission, close the hearing to the commission and open it up for discussion and/or a motion, please. Yes?
I worked inpatient at CHKD in the, in the PICU and over at Norfolk General, and I met some outstanding traveling nurses. Some of the best nurses I met were from other states, and some of the best nurses I knew became traveling nurses. So I think that this is a great opportunity, and I thank the applicant for putting it out there, and I'll be voting for it.
Do you have a motion? You want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the application.
I'll second it.
With a second by Commissioner Weiner. We call for the vote.
Aye.
Mr. Alcaraz? Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to zero, Agenda Item Number 13 has been approved. Our next item of business is Agenda Item Number 15. Madam Chair, we do have three speakers on this item. It is Anita West, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 121 South Kellum Road in the Bayside District.
Welcome. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Anita West, and the property owner of 121 South Kellum Road. My mom purchased this house in 2005. She moved here to be with me and my children. In January of this year, she passed away, so we have the home. I have a lot of family members that come in the area, and I would like to use this as a short-term rental. We have family members that come in the area, and we feel this would be a good home base for them, with a lot of memories, where they could come and stay without the stress of renting a hotel or trying to find somewhere to stay. Of course, the family members is not going to be here 365 days a year. I have a nephew that lives in Florida, who plans to relocate in 2021 next year. This is where he comes to stay, when he comes to visit. He, he stays in that home. In between time, we want to rent it out, as, like I said, short-term, to families. Also, as the young lady before me said, traveling nurses. My daughter's a therapist, and she has a lot of contacts with people who come in the area who needs places to stay. I have a cleaning crew that makes sure the outside is maintained, as well as the inside. We have a huge backyard and plenty of parking space, so we don't have to worry about the overload of parking in the street. We plan to rent to families, like I said, and they have to be 30 and older. And there's no smoking permitted in the property.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. West? Thank you, we'll come back to you.
Madam Chair, there are three speakers. Donald Roberts, to be followed by Terry Roberts.
Yes, my name is Don Roberts. I live in Bulkanas Village. We just give a copy of this petition to the lady there at the desk. We have about 40 people that signed it, that live beside and in front and in back of Ms. West. And so we didn't have much time to get the stuff together because we just got these applications Friday. But anyway, we got it together, and we really do not want short-term rental in our neighborhood. We've lived there, most of us have lived there around 50 or 60 years or more, ever since it was built on what used to be Holland Swamp Road. And Mr. Bark, Mr., Ms. Barkle and, and gentlemen that built the houses, built them for single-family residences, and that's what they've been all these years. And we'd like to keep it that way. I know you've heard about all this stuff about the short-term rentals in the last two or three hours or so, and we don't really want that in our neighborhood. There's already enough problems around there. We have a lot of older people, a lot of handicapped people, and we don't need more problems. We have a problem right on my road, on Car Lane, right sort of behind this house, where that, they turned the camera stuff into a city police department because people was trying to steal stuff there. And the hill that lives right just south of Ms. West is scared that something's going to happen to her and her house because they're already getting people that get up, trying to break into her car, and getting into a mailbox and things. And the next two ladies passed her, south of her, are in the same boat. They're old, they're handicapped, and I got problems. I live right behind Ms. West, and we really don't want that kind of carrying on in our neighborhood. We don't need it. And I ask you to, please don't let it happen.
I'll tell him, Dad.
Uh-huh.
I'll tell him. And I had heard that 12 people were going to be able to rent at one time.
What, let me just stop you one second, so we can do this one speaker at a time.
That's my dad.
I know, I know. I appreciate that. But he gets three minutes, and then...
Oh, go ahead, Dad. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, his three minutes are up now.
Well, Dad, it's over now.
All done.
No, it's...
Okay.
Behave. So, I'm caring.
Respectfully served, so now you'll be introduced, and you'll state your name. We'll wait for the city clerk to do that, and then you'll get your three minutes as well.
Okay.
Okay.
What's that?
We have to wait. We have to wait, Dad.
Oh, we have to wait?
I think so.
Oh.
So if you'll go ahead and call the next speaker...
May I have this? Terry Roberts.
That's me.
Terry Roberts, to be followed by Barbara Messner.
I'm Terry.
Okay.
So, Ms. Roberts?
Ms. Roberts, if you'll state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
And my name is Tara Roberts, and I'm a little slow because I just had brain surgery because I can't remember real quick.
Well, we'll give you extra 30 seconds.
But, and also, my dad had told me that they have it where they're going to rent to 12 people at a time. I'm sorry, but you know what? It's a neighborhood, and you don't put 12 people in a home to rent at... The homes don't fit 12 people, to be honest with you. I don't know if hers has three bedrooms or four, but even if they have four bedrooms, though, that's three people in a room within a week or two weeks at the time. And I don't want it to be where, I hate to say this, but I don't want it to be where all of a sudden this home is going to be either for drugs or prostitutes. We don't need that in this neighborhood. And I'll be perfectly honest with you. She's on Kellum Road, and their homes here and right across the street are townhouses. Well, the townhouses, the people have to, they have to park on the road because they're townhouses, and there's no driveways. And she's on the corner, and she's got the driveway. Well, you can't really park cars in front of that because that's Kellum Road. That's very busy. Walmart and Best Buy and all that, that's extremely busy road. You see what I'm saying? I'll be honest with you. It's a nice neighborhood. It's a family neighborhood. They don't need that. Really, they don't need that. I'm sorry. They really don't need that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roberts.
You're welcome.
Our final speaker is Barbara Messner.
You're doing just fine, sir. Ms. Messner, welcome.
Thank you. I, I'm appalled that, that you put the one through for another elderly gentleman, and he said they already had problems. These people who are older and have health issues and who take the time to come out today, they're not, they're not considered. You put things through anyway. And as far as, this is the next one that's coming up, but there are shuttle buses that have been shuttling people in residential neighborhoods for like 15 years. Most people don't know what goes on. But, like I said, you're all liable for, you should all go out there and talk to the neighbors, and you should, you should, you should actually check out these things. That's what, you know, y'all are supposed to do. And most of you have some type of conflict. Like I said, there's, there's, these people have no recourse. You, you deny a few of them, but, you know, like I said, the only reason I knew you were still going to have this meeting, even though there were official objections because of lack of due process, and in the fact that this room, this room is too small. I watched earlier, there's people lined up against the wall. You know, before, we had ballrooms, I think, two and three. This room is not big enough. And then there's going to be, you know, joint meetings. This, and, and half the people here, including these tables that take up all this room, it's staff. Staff takes up the seating. Yeah, you're destroying the entire city by having short-term rentals... Yeah, you're destroying the entire city by having short-term rentals, shorter than six months. You know, saying it's for, you know, nurses and doctors, they can, you know, there are even people that are giving them, not renting to them, but giving them mobile homes and things. We're not responsible for everyone during a pandemic. And if there is a pandemic, you shouldn't be having people... I listened earlier, and somebody was bragging about people coming from foreign countries and foreign cities, hotspots. No one's checking on this. You know, it's a gorgeous day. I don't really want to be here, but, you know, I'm on the record and y'all are on the record for, for your failure to protect the citizens and to put them first over profit.
Thank you, Ms. Messner. I believe your time is here. Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come back up?
Well, yes, I've heard what everyone said. I'm a landlord, I'm a property owner of several properties in Virginia Beach. So I'm quite aware of some of the activities that they're speaking about. I have long-term rentals and I have a rooming home. I have two agencies that have tried to contact me to use this property here as a rooming house, where I wouldn't have to come before the board. I took into consideration about my neighbors and decided not to use it as a rooming house because that is a different type of environment, and I didn't want that in the neighborhood. Like I said, for the short-term rental, we will screen the individuals who will come and stay. We are trying to, we would like to keep it as a family rental place. My nephew will have a room there, and he will be coming back and forth periodically, so he's going to need his own room. So it's not going to be, I don't, it's not going to be as they said, for prostitutes or drugs, anything like that. I have grandchildren sixteen, fifteen, nine, and six. So I'm very conscious of who will be staying in our home. Thank you.
One question, Ms. West, with Mr. Weiner.
This is not your permanent residence, correct?
No, it's, it was my mother's home, and it's my, it is my home, but I don't, I don't even know.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
And again, that's why I want to kind of rent it out short-term, so someone will be occupying the house and it's not vacant year-round. And I won't have family staying in it all the time, but I did want to have it, you know, available.
Ms. West, Mr. Alcaraz...
I think you just answered that, but you said your nephew's going to live there, but not full-time? Is that what you said?
Yes, my nephew lives in Florida, and he is going to relocate. My mom raised him. He's going to relocate back in 2021. When he comes to visit, like he'll be here for Thanksgiving, this is the place where he will, he will stay. So when he's back and forth, he'll be living there. I just don't want to keep the house unoccupied the whole year-round.
Yes, Robin?
Is the house currently occupied?
No, we just renovated.
Okay. So, to be clear, she's applying for a conditional use permit before she is renting it out? Okay.
Yes, and I live less than a mile, and my two children, all of us live in three different areas, but we live less than, I live less than the Malloway. I live in Pembroke. My daughter lives by Mount Trash Room. My son lives less than a half a mile from there. So if anyone needed to contact us, we're there. And my two neighbors on each side, Ms. Edner and my other neighbor, they agreed, they didn't have any objections to me doing this. And I don't live on the corner. I live the second house from the corner, so it is adequate parking space. And like I said, the driveway is large enough itself where four cars, six cars are easy fitting there, but I don't plan on having twelve guests in the house at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, I'm sorry, it's closed to the speakers right now. All right, we'll close this and open it up amongst the commissioners, please. Redman.
First off, this is one of these things where it's, you know, you would, it's troubling because you would think this is just the kind of situation where someone would want to avail themselves of a, of a short-term rental. It's her mom's house, doesn't want to lose the house. This is a way to generate revenue from it. And the applicant strikes me as, as being, as being detail-oriented. Nevertheless, I was part of one debate already, and some of you were as well, with city council. This is not a neighborhood that is, that has a lot of short-term rentals. That is where you would expect to find short-term rentals. We had an agenda item in this neighborhood on consent, and city council, I think it is not unfair to say summarily rejected it. I don't believe anything has changed in that regard, and particularly because in this case, as opposed to the prior one, there is opposition, and compelling opposition. And specific opposition, not of a general nature, but I thought of a more specific nature than that. So as much as I am sympathetic to the applicant's desire to do this, I don't think this application is going to work. And I don't know that it should work. And as a result, I am not going to support it and, and therefore move for denial of the application.
Mr. Weiner?
I'm going to second that, and the reason I'm going to second is because, not like this house, the last house, that was her primary residence, and she lived there. And yes, she was going to rent it out, but that was her residence, and she lived there. This isn't a primary residence. This, to me, is more like a business. And it is in the neighborhood, and looking at the map, there's already been one denied right down the road. So I will second the motion for denial.
Ms. Klein?
I intend to support the application. It sounds like it's only for short-term use, and until her nephew is able to move up here, and while we can't forecast what's going to happen with the ordinances, we're moving in the direction that if it's not in an overlay, it won't be grandfathered in. So the maximum she would have this is five years anyway.
Yes, Jack?
I think that Ms. West is, you know, very, would be considerate of her neighbors. Can't even say it. Conscientious.
Microphone.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'll repeat just what I said. I think that Ms. West is, you know, would be considerate of her neighbors and conscientious of, you know, who rents, rents the property. But in Pocahontas Village, it looks like there is been consistency in not allowing short-term rentals. There's also, does appear to be more opposition, not just because we had, you know, one or two speakers, you know, there was, you know, petition, you know, against, against that, I believe. Am I correct in that? That the gentleman did provide a petition? And so I, I would intend not to support, to support that.
All right, anybody else? If not, then we've got a motion on the floor to deny by Commissioner Redman and a second by Commissioner Weiner, and so we can call for the vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling for the vote, motion for denial, Mr. Alcaraz.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Nay.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman? Oh, oh, he's absent, okay. I didn't see him leave. Ms. Klein?
Nay.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair, Oliver? By a vote of five, four, and two against, the motion for denial has been approved. Madam Chair, our last agenda item is number seventeen, and we have four speakers on this item. It is HDS Properties LLC, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental, on property located at 600 South Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District. For the applicant or the applicant's representative, please step to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Marjorie Chapman. I'm the property manager for HDS Properties LLC Incorporated, and I'm here to speak on their behalf. They have applied with all of your conditions, and they will agree to all of your conditions as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mrs. Chapman?
Madam Chair, we have four speakers. First one is Ron Swan, to be followed by Barbara Messner.
Welcome, Mr. Swan. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Ron Swan, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I live at 825 South Atlantic Avenue. I'm here representing the Croatan Civic League. I'm on the committee for short-term rentals. I've lived in Croatan for thirty-six years. I'm going to be briefer than what I thought I was going to be. We, only the last couple of years have we realized how many short-term rentals we think we have. We, we are diverse community. We often disagree with ourselves, but we ran a survey on Nextdoor, and eighty-five percent of the respondents were opposed to short-term residents. We estimate there's approximately sixty short-term residents and Airbnbs. Apparently, as best as we can tell, the city record shows two. Last month, at the October twentieth city council meeting, we were gratified to see a ten-to-nothing disapproval with one council member, this was at 809 Vanderbilt Avenue, sorry, with one council member, Guy Tower, stating enough is enough. And we feel the same way. Just as an aside, I have two friends, you probably know them, Alan Pyle and Tom Joint Jr., who were both long-term residents of Croatan. And when short-term rentals became adjacent to their property, they both moved out of Croatan. They felt it wasn't safe. It's heartbreaking to me that they had to do that. We have corporations buying short-term rental homes in Croatan. They, they can't mitigate behavior, no matter how hard they try. I have one across the street from me. On this particular one, 600 South Atlantic, on November third, I think you probably got a plethora of information on this, and I'm sorry, but you got, you received a letter from our president of the Civic League, and in that letter, he referenced everything I referenced, just did a better job at it, but he included a picture. And this is the backside of 600 South Atlantic Avenue. It's adjacent to a deeded ingress egress, private one, and, but for public use. But you can see it's caved in on the side. The property of concrete fence surrounding the swimming pool is caved in. We have erosion. That part of Croatan Beach is the narrowest part of Croatan Beach. It's a real problem. At high tide, it's twenty feet. This house is a large house, it's a big house. We have, we didn't know that we were becoming a mini sand bridge. We had no idea until it got out of control. So we, as a community, as a majority of the community and as a civic league, have taken a position that we are opposed to short-term rentals in our neighborhood for all the reasons you hear all the time up here. And lastly, thank you for being here the day after the election and doing the city's business.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Swan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner to be followed by Jan Periello.
Welcome, Mrs. Messner.
Good evening. You know, as I said earlier, I've, y'all are aware, you had a huge meeting on short-term rentals, and you were given a lot of input. People opposed it, but you haven't taken any of that to heart. As far as Croatan, you know, I appreciate the fact that they're finally waking up, and the number of homes over there for sale is unbelievable. And part of the reason they're selling is because they don't really have a beach. The beach has been, hasn't been replenished, and it gets, you know, dredged back for Rudy Like I said, I've, you've seen the signs, you know, some of them are hidden, and the one for 600 was, it wasn't really noticeable unless you stopped your car and got out to take a picture. So, you know, everyone doesn't drive by and look, and everyone doesn't read the agendas. Like I said, I see shuttle buses shuttling people back and forth, and, you know, what the elderly couple said, there's a lot of things that go on in this city that no one has any idea. And when it's at the hotel strip, there's plenty of police down there to protect, you know, the hotel industry, but there aren't plenty of police. If there were plenty of police, we wouldn't have all the violence in our, in our neighborhoods, and, you know, long waits. You know, even if you call 311, sometimes there's a six-minute wait. So, you know, I, I think because they're, you know, Croatan is organized and they have a little bit more clout, that hopefully you will deny this one. But the short-term rentals, and the fact that there's no requirements that they, where the people can come from, from out of state, out of state, they could, you know, I guess you could rent to the Cuemos, you know, from New York. I mean, like I say, I don't appreciate being here, and I don't appreciate the way my city's run. And Mr. Tahan, I don't appreciate the fact that you do not...
Mrs. Messner, I'm going to interrupt you right now. We're not going to do that to Mr. Tahan. You need to stay right to the short-term rental. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Jan Periello. My husband and I live on South Atlantic Avenue in Croatan. My letter of October eighth to Mr. Alcaraz stated the negatives and hazards of granting a cup to now just 600 South Atlantic. So I'm going to spare you and not go into those issues. I'm sure you read the letter. Over the years, I have watched my community change with a number of STRs overtaking us, legal and illegal. We all dread the summer months, watching our quiet community turn into chaos with the influx of renters bringing traffic and disruption. Without providing any spot checks or enforcement of the regulations, while continually granting STRs, the city has left us helpless to control the party and event houses. The burden of trying to protect our right to the quiet enjoyment of our homes should not be our burden. These are our homes in a neighborhood where our children deserve to be safe while playing, bike riding, skateboarding. They should be able to sleep without being subjected to inebriated strangers roaming through their yard, loud noise, and filthy language way into the night. I ask you to deny these, this particular application now, and I'm going to, like Mr. Swan, quote our Beach District Councilman, "Enough is enough." Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Rickman. Cynthia Rickman, followed by Amanda Robinson.
Welcome. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Cynthia Rickman, and I live at 512 South Atlantic. I'm also neighbors with Jan. The problem we're having in Croatan is, from my count, there are about 30 of them. I am working with, to try to get information on whether any of these are actually licensed to be doing this, and I believe I'm having a meeting after this to discuss it, because I do not think that you should be approving things that you cannot police. And when I ask, "How many are in Croatan?", there should be an answer just like that. I don't know if they've also mentioned, this house that would like to be a short-term rental is on the market to be sold. So, who's going to be overseeing this if you were to say yes? Are they a rental? Are they for sale? They can't be both. And Croatan, right now where I live, there are within eight houses of me, going in a two-block radius, six short-term rentals. I do not believe any of them are licensed. Some of them were grandfathered, but I don't think they bothered to go ahead and get the license at that point. I would like to sit in my backyard and not listen to Marco Polo at 1:00 in the morning from the rental two doors down. And that's pretty much it.
Do we have any questions?
I have one. Mr. Tahan, does the, does the CUP go with the property or the owner if it's approved?
It runs with the land.
Okay, thank you. I just want her to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our final speaker is Amanda Robinson.
Welcome. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Amanda Robinson. I live at 504 South Atlantic Avenue. I live next to a rental property, which is at the beginning of the block, and I've lived there for nine, almost 10 years. And I feel, I know all the difficulties that go along with living right next to a rental property. I am opposed to the 600 South Atlantic House acquiring a CUP for an STR. I wrote a letter to Mr. Alcaraz last month, and I will echo those sentiments. I relate to him. I'm opposed for three reasons. First, I value the community Croatan offers. I love knowing my neighbors, and I am a board member of the Civic League. I'm, I'm the secretary, and I also am in charge of social activities. So, I really do my best to foster friendship and camaraderie between my neighbors. I'm also currently the president of the Women's Club. I, I don't want to see our neighborhood have any more STRs. I have two small children, and we walk to the bus stop. They go to different schools, one at ODS and the other at Cook. And so, the two bus stops are on South, forgive me, Vanderbilt and Twilight, and the other one is Virginia Dare and Twilight. And so, that 600 house would have a big impact. If all of the cars are allowed to park in that, what is it, for six bedrooms, they're allowed to have eight cars. Is that right?
Six cars.
Yeah, so that would be a great increase of traffic, and Twilight would bear the brunt of it. And we're at the bus stop. There are no sidewalks. I just want to make sure that it's safe for our kids to walk around. When you're on vacation, you're not necessarily thinking about kids going to school, and you're not necessarily paying attention. Additionally, as Ron Swan mentioned, the Moffett Nichols study about our beach shows that Twilight is at a critical point for beach erosion, and having somebody that's not really interested in the health of our beach, or the longevity of it, just doesn't make sense to me. I feel like that is a poor decision for the entire community. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much. Any more speakers?
No, ma'am, no more speakers.
Would the applicant like to come back up, please?
Yes, I'd just like to add that I've been doing short-term rentals for 22 years now, and Croatan's always been in our inventory. I mean, Croatan is like part of our resort area. I mean, it's just, you know, it goes from Croatan all the way to, you know, north end of the bay. So, you know, I don't think it's unusual to ask for a conditional use permit for this property, being Croatan's always been, like, it's just considered part of our resort area and part of our vacation area, where people want to come and enjoy the beach, and enjoy our city.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Chapman? Mr. Weiner?
Are you already using this as a short-term rental?
Excuse me?
Are you already using this as a short-term rental?
No, sir.
Okay, okay.
No, sir.
How often does the owner, how often does the owner come in?
Currently, it's rented right now. It's currently rented on a one-year lease right now.
And can you explain about it being, getting ready to be sold?
It was a situation where the owner is still trying to sell the property, but if not, once this lease expires, they may want to convert to the vacation, short-term rentals.
Wait, okay, I'm sorry. Say that one more time? I didn't comprehend that.
So, right now, we have a yearly tenant in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's still for sale.
Okay.
If they're not successful with selling it, then probably the next term around, they want to be able to rent it as a vacation rental.
So, so he goes to sell it, and that short-term rental is going to go with the property? And that person, we don't know who that person's going to be. See where I'm going with that?
I see where you're going, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Wall? No? Okay. So, we have no more speakers. I'm going to close this to the public and open it up to the commission or to a motion, please. Mr. Inman?
I have a question. I'm just going to leave it on. I'm sorry. I've got a question about the map that's on our, in our materials. It shows a whole bunch of dots that are gray, which says that they are registered. And what does that mean? They're grandfathered? They were like grandfathered?
No, registered means that they're paying their taxes. We have, we have not yet had a chance to go through all of the applications, whether or not they meet all the requirements of 241.2. So, if you, if you're paying your taxes and registered with the Commissioner of Revenue, it shows up on the list that, that we utilize to mark on this, on the staff report.
So, if they're, I'm going to piggyback on that, Mike's, so if they're registered and paying their taxes, then I would assume that they're all renting? They're all operating as a short-term rental?
I, I should say that they're registered, and whether they're paying their taxes or not, it's just that they've submitted the paperwork. I'll clarify that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's kind of where I was going. I mean, they're, they're registered, but they don't have conditional use permits, yet, but that, you know.
They may or may not need one. So, I mean, again, we have, as you, as the commission is fully aware, we've been inundated with the conditional use permits. We have this next step as we transition with additional staff to dive into all these dots, jokingly, but to all these applications, or the ones that we have submitted. Currently, right now, I think we have 200, some are still here, 255 actual applications out of the numbers of these registered dots. So, we don't even have all those yet. So, we've been sending mailings to them, reminding them to come see us. So, we need to go through all those.
Could some of these gray dot properties have applications in that are being processed?
Some, not for, some of them could have a zoning permit application, so that we can review to make sure they meet the parking and meet everything else. And they could have, if they were registered and paying taxes prior to July 2018, they would be considered grandfathered. So, there's still a zoning permit process, or the conditional use permit process.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I, I have a lot of concern about this neighborhood. I mean, the representation just made that Croatan has always been considered part of the resort area. I've been here 47 years. I've never considered Croatan part of the resort area, and nor should it be treated as part of the resort area. And I, I have a major concern. I do understand, and I believe the, the representatives of, of the neighborhood, or the residents who have come, and Civic League members, that there are short-term rentals going on that maybe are, are not authorized yet. And I just, I have a concern with this, especially this particular, size of this particular property, and what it portends for, a lot of congestion related to it, because of its size and the number of visitors that would be generated for that property. So, I'm, I'm opposed to this application.
I have to go along with Mike. I don't, I'm, I'm not going to admit to be here longer than Mike, because that'll just start showing my age, but I can agree with him that Croatan has never been, as far as I know, considered part of the resort strip. It's more of a cul-de-sac neighborhood, if anything. And, and the fact that this house is for sale concerns me, and that this, this conditional use permit would go along with the land. I'm just not real comfortable with, with this at all. And so, I would not support this application. Mr. Redman?
I'm completely untroubled by the fact people want to sell their houses all the time, and that's not typically inconsistent with people who also might want to rent it whichever one works. However, I completely agree with both of you. When I look at this, I say, isn't that what Sandbridge is for? There are a lot of big houses in Sandbridge that, you know, that are, that are far more protected under Virginia law than anything else that we've done. I agree with you. I don't find this to be an appropriate application. And with that, I would move for denial of the application. Thank you.
Second.
And what are you, about 34? I'm calling you 34.
I'm about 35 now.
Okay, all right.
So, um-
I second that, indeed.
Great, thank you. Did you get that? Okay, perfect.
Yes, ma'am.
Call for the vote then, when you're ready.
Okay. We have a motion for denial. Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Graham is absent. Mr. Horsley is absent. Mr. Inman?
Aye.
Ms. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Aye.
Mr. Wall?
Aye.
Vice Chair Weiner?
Aye.
Madam Chair Oliver?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to zero, agenda item number 17 has been denied.
I believe at this time, that was our last item on our agenda. Am I correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So, at this time, I want to thank everybody who had an application at this point, and we're going to take a five-minute break, and then go into our closed public hearing discussion of short-term rental. Is that how we're going to title this?
Let me clarify the words, that we're going to go into a public meeting workshop, with no comment, with no public comment.
No public comment. There you go.
So, you will workshop. It is an open meeting, just to clarify. So, but yes, if we could take a five to 10-minute break, Madam Chair, that would, that would help staff to get prepared.
Perfect, thank you. We'll see you all back here in five minutes.